When it gets settled, we'll formally start the meeting. I believe, okay, we're just waiting for Stacey.
Shall I go knock on the glass?
Yes, please.
You have to be picking up screen paper, but not by...
Okay, so let's go ahead and get started. Welcome to the committee of the whole meeting for today, Monday, July 14th. We have two items on the agenda. First is round two, second inning, second quarter. First follow-up from our previous meeting where we discussed concurrency. And so our resident experts actually...
For standing is our IPZ zone.
We are doing the IPZ zone. Okay, I'm sorry, I got the, I got the agenda mixed up.
That helps us.
They changed, they changed the agenda. No. Thanks for keeping me.
You're welcome.
I mean, you guys were sitting up here all ready to go, and I thought we were ready to go. So the IPZ. So Bob, you want to do the introduction?
Sure. So with us today, we have Jen Davis, who's our Economic Development Manager. And Hayes, isn't it? Jen Davis Hayes. Jen Davis Hayes, who's our Economic Development Manager. And we have a guest with us, too.
Yes, and this is Doug Lean, and he is with the City of Auburn for their economic development. But he's also the administrator for their IPZ there and the state chair for the IPZ Administrators Association. Is that the correct term?
Yep.
Thank you. And so Jen's going to walk us through a brief presentation and question and answer session on innovation, innovative IPZs. And we'll just go with the acronym. And as you may remember, these application opportunities come along every odd year. So 2015 is the next one. We've done some work already, and she's got a brief kind of outline on some of the work that we've done. There's some additional work that has to be done in order to get us lined up to submit an application in 2015. And so we'll walk through that, and then if there's some additional questions or help that I might be able to provide, support to Jen, we'll do that.
Perfect, thank you, Bob. And so we're lucky enough to have Doug be nearby in town tonight, and so he thought he'd join us because he knows a lot about IPZs. And we are, as you know, are just going down that road. And so did people receive on email the actual two-sided handout about IPZs, and you're somewhat familiar with them? So basically, they are innovative partnership zones. And they're designated by the State of Washington, the Department of Commerce. And they're an economic development tool, basically, to help you work with a business sector and work on, with partners of research, workforce development, and private sector, to really grow that sector and to grow jobs and continue to do well with the economy. So one of the things that we look at doing is applying for an IPZ in 2015. And that would not only allow us to, to help to define what ISACWA is going to be doing, but to increase our partnerships with potentially Bellevue College, looking at maybe potentially UW or WSU, and our businesses here within the city that we're not working as closely with, to help support them to grow and to recruit additional businesses. So it's a really great tool to use, and it will also help to set the stage for other, for other businesses looking within to ISACWA about what we are really focused on. So for instance, we had Cobalt Development, who develops hospitals for, smaller-sized hospitals for veterans rehab, that came here several times in the last month, looking at locations. And if they saw that we were a veterans healthcare or healthcare focus, they might have really considered, you know, wow, this is the place I need to be because I see that we have the network and the support. And so we're hoping that, again, this tool will be really powerful to recruit businesses and to show them that we really want them here. So the process, basically, is that next May, there'll be a letter of intent released by the Department of Commerce with the information that will be due in mid-July, sorry. And then business plan is due in August with a presentation in September. And then designation happens October 1st. So it's a very quick timeline, and we're really trying to run hard and get to that, meet those timelines. So the application process probably isn't that difficult. I look at Doug when I say that. Of course, it's probably a lot of work, and we're doing some, you know, information, or some work now to gather some data. But I believe one of the hardest parts is figuring out where your sector, where your IPZ should be. Because as you know, we are still trying to define what our sectors and what our, where our, we know Microsoft and Costco and Swedish are great companies here. But there's a lot of smaller companies and mid-sized companies that can provide, that are providing jobs and job growth here that we are not as in tune with and touch with yet. So that's the, the challenge we're looking, facing to apply for an IPZ at this time. And so we did move forward and apply, or started doing an economic data profile for the city, looking at a high level of industry, what's here, and the workforce development. And our next step is to take those sectors that, that we identified and go and test the market. So we think we're great at, well, going out and looking, using a consultant to go out and talk to the industry specialists and look at locations, and does it makes, does it really make sense for us to say, we want to be a sports medicine, you know, location, or we want to be a high-tech location? I mean, we all want those big companies when Boeing talks about moving here, and when bookings.com talks about moving here. But really, what's a great fit for this community and can play upon the talents and the workforce development resources that we have and partnerships we have here? So that's why the sector analysis is a really important piece of figuring out, these are the sectors that you're strong in ISACWA, or that there's growth in the region and in the country, and you have the, the factors that will help them be successful here. So I'm going to stop talking, and I don't know if Doug wants to jump in about talking a little bit more details about IPZs in general. I mean, he, he could probably talk for days about IPZs because he's really entrenched in them.
Well, Mayor and Council, thank you for having me. And I have offered in the past with Jen to, to reach out and help. As she said, I'm the Economic Development Manager over in Auburn and the, our administrator for our IPZ, which is the Urban Center for Innovative Partnerships, is the name of it. We have four clusters that we identified in Auburn. So ours was a little bit of a hybrid. What happened to us, as we began to go through the due diligence that you're embarking on right now, we ran across something we didn't expect, and that was multiple clusters that had been there for a number of years. And it was, you know, how do you, how do you vet out which one's more important than the other one? So we had a very difficult time. So as we went through our certification process with Commerce, it got to be a little bit, and I'll use the term squirrely because that's exactly what it was with Commerce. So it took us a little bit longer, but what we ultimately ended up doing then is had to go dig a little bit deeper in which cluster was most advanced, what we could work on first, where could we, you know, be most effective with our, our process. I'm going to hand out a handout that I brought for you all. This was a presentation that I did for Sound Cities Association back in December. Sound Cities started doing workshops on ideas for economic development, and they asked me to come in with our mayor Nancy Backus, back in December when she was mayor-elect, and give a case study on our IPZ. It's a phenomenal process and trail to go down. It will identify what you have, what you can be, and what, you know, what building blocks you have to work with. And I think Jen's done a wonderful job. She and I've spent quite a bit of time on the phone. One of the things, and I'll stop right there for a second, the IPZs, there's 18 of them in the State of Washington. They've never been organized. Commerce, basically, I think, does this divide-and-conquer routine, because if they keep you apart, they don't have to give you any money. And that's basically the process with them right now on everything. The state is going to have to figure out a whole bunch of stuff on education, transportation, I think, before they ever get any meaningful funding at this point for economic development in any form or fashion. But we keep hoping and keep working down in Olympia. So the 18 of us that are current administrators for the IPZs around the state, we did organize about a year, a little over a year ago, a year and a half ago. And I am, as she said, the state chair for that IPZ. It's not an association, it's just a committee, basically. And Commerce has really embraced this, because now we're basically working under one voice, one group, and we are seeming, seeming to have some traction down in Olympia, especially with the elected officials down there. Because basically, if they spend a dollar on the program, they're affecting 18 regions in the state, and they like that kind of a state of economy, I guess, sense of economy. And the other unique thing about IPZs is that the front third of all the IPZs are absolutely identical. They're clones. Because everybody went through the same process, went through the same vetting, the same certification process, that you proved up that you should be one, or you have the right blocks in place. The neat thing about IPZs is that the reason why they were certified is they're all unique to themselves. And so what we have found is a group of 18 IPZs around the state is that there's really no competition. I placed a company over in Port Angeles a few months ago. It was a composites company that I recruited that actually came to us because of our IPZ. There's 300 aerospace jobs, but they, I was after that piece of the puzzle, because that's what we're known for over there. But they had a marine division that was going to be an R and D with marine and water and those types of areas and composite studies. They didn't belong in Auburn, not in the least. They belonged out on the coast where they could get, and get close to the water and get to the, the area where they needed to be. And there is an IPZ for marine composites in Port Angeles. So basically, I placed them over there and worked with the administrator there. I've worked with, you know, Spokane, Richland. It's, it's a unique core group of folks around the state. And we are, you know, beginning to do some good things. You're embarking on probably the most interesting process right now, it's identifying what you have. Now, we do, I wasn't lucky enough to get, have any budget money to work with, so we did it all with shoe leather, and it's very, very difficult. It took us six months, and we interviewed over 700 companies by walking in their front door and going through a interview process to understand who they were, what they were, and, and what their core business, you know, value was. I kind of got a twofer out of it, because I've only, I've been in Auburn about three and a half years now. So about the time I got there, I understood, learned about IPZs. So I was doing the typical Economic Development 101, understanding what I had to work with from a business retention expansion programming that we needed to develop and a business plan. And it really was a very similar trail. So we were able to do two things out of one. The basic process of an IPZ, and if you look through that case study, and I can email you the PowerPoint, is once you identify what you have, you look at what you have for clusters. Do you have a synergism, synergism around any one particular sector, industry silo that is already there, somewhat beginning to function, that is producing products of like type or in general like type? The second phase of that is, is there a research facility, university, national lab, something that's there that you have locally, that is interested in that industry type, that can work with them? Or is there WSU, or UW, or someone within, you know, within the general area? Can be a remote scenario, they do not have to be. That was a change that took place two years ago. It used to be that the research university had to be within your jurisdiction. And that was changed, because that was very difficult, the way UW, WSU are set up. And developing that relationship under an MOU contract with the research partner to agree to be there, actively work with your companies. The idea of it is, is that you develop partnerships between light companies or companies that maybe make strange bedfellows, but a lot of times, that makes the most interesting types of ideas coming out of something new. And that the university is there, you develop a plan that that's going to hopefully do micro-startups, new companies, spinoffs, and you're going to home-grow jobs. Because those are jobs that will stick. They're not going to pick up when somebody waives a tax incentive at them, or whatever, that they're going to be gone on you. So that, that's the hope. And then a commercialization plan of how are you going to work with those companies or that industry startup to help them sell their product? There's an actual requirement to develop a commercialization plan. So as you go through the application process, and, and you do understand what you have for core industries, working with whichever university you think or research lab that you're going to approach, and then just developing the business plan, feasibility study, the commercialization plan, you know, it's definitely some writing involved in it. But I think Jen's got a, a good start on what she's working on. We have a mentor committee from our administrators committee that will work with new, new areas that are looking to, to develop. So other administrators, it might be the one from Spokane, or Richland, or Tina from Seattle or something, that will work with IPZs. And obviously, I'm the closest one to you, so I've told Jen I'll be here to help support her. I'm fortunate, if our Mayor, Mayor Backus and our council has been very supportive of it, we're finding it to be a great economic development tool. It's not for every company, and IPZs aren't for every community. But if you do it right, and you have what it takes, it can be a wonderful tool and can really help generate homegrown jobs.
So I have a comment or a question, or actually a comment. Thanks so much for offering your help. I really appreciate you being here. And, and, you know, I know you're...
Economic development is quite a brotherhood, you know.
It is.
Oh, yeah, you know, there's a special handshake and everything.
Oh, yeah. Well, thank you for that, for that offer and that, that commitment of, of help going forward. I appreciate that very much. Dinah?
I know you can hear me. I thank you also for coming and providing some more information, and I'm excited about this. I have a couple of questions, because it sounds like there's a, like the organization that you've developed with the other groups that have IPZs is a very valuable group. It sounds like the process is valuable, but then it seems to get to a, well, what then, after you've gone through all this application with the state? So I'm, I'm just questioning and asking myself, at what point does this process not return? You know, you go through all the things that you need to do for development, and there's this great group of people, they're not the Department of Commerce. And, and what value is it in actually doing the, the formal application with the department?
In the, I guess, you lost me on part of that question towards the end.
What's the value in applying to the Department of Commerce? I mean, I understand value in steps.
You know, we all ask ourselves that question almost on a daily basis, because we're all, there's 18 of us right now living the dream out there, they get no support from the state. And, but we all keep doing it, because we see the value to what it can be for our local community. The process of going through the certification process is no different than 20 years after you've graduated from school. Really, what good was that diploma? It's the, it's the value, it's the sense of safety when you're talking to a prospective company, that, you know, you're inside of this process that's been certified by the state. There is an intrinsic value to that out there. And we've been into it long enough now, and I've actually been able to test drive, being able to say to a company, oh, and by the way, you're within sight of our IPZ boundary, and this is what it's, you know, can offer you. And it means something to some of those companies. After the, during the downturn, companies became very lean and mean and very self-centered, and I don't blame them, because they had to to survive, to eat. And so what we found is that if you can create an environment where companies know they can come up quick and get some help, to where they can make a buck from it and go back down in their hall, that's exactly what they will do. So what we as administrators have began to do, and one of the things that we did do, I did get one small grant from Commerce last year, and what we did with it, is we actually developed through one of our corporate partners with CenturyLink, we had developed an iCloud platform for the IPZ program now that's, it's basically a one-touch, one-stop shop for innovation, research, and connecting to the supply chain. And it's operational right now. And we've been, I was in Olympia twice in March, stumping for funding to operate that system. And I met with Senate leadership last week, and have gotten commitments now for funding bill to be sponsored, both the ED committees, both in the House and the Senate. So we're, we're trying to get funding to bring additional tools, because that's what it takes. And on a local basis, I'll tell you what it takes to make it work. It takes boots on the ground. Right now, 90% of our IPZ is myself and anybody in Auburn that's connected with, with economic development. It's knowing that ABC Corp. is here and XYZ over here, and they're looking for their number B widget. That's the connectability to an IPZ locally within the supply chain. It keeps dollars being spent locally rather than purchasing a product from Pittsburgh and being shipped in. It's creating an environment where a local company, if they're looking to solve a problem within their manufacturing process, that they can access research documents, patents, staff at WSU or UW that can get involved with them on a research project, for example. Or maybe there's a patent already there that can be licensed very quickly. Both UW and WSU are land-grant universities. They don't care if they make a dime off of the research they do. It's just a fact. WSU, which is our research partner, they've got millions of dollars worth of patents sitting on the shelf in tin cans they've never sold one dime off of, because they don't really care. They're state-funded, their job is to teach people to do research, not to make money from the research. So it's how do you get that technology out on the street and license it? We have two companies in Auburn now that are connected with WSU, doing as part of the $80 million research for biofuels now, for aviation fuel, and the list goes on. And stormwater filters made out of a bio product for treatment of storm, urban stormwater, you collect it, you have before you can release it back into the water streams. And so there's all kinds of different things going on, with nanofiber and some composite work. So it can be a really good tool, but right now, the beginnings of the program is, is really is making it part of your economic development program and your business assistance program and connecting, you know, I, I'm sure Jen burns up as many, or Jen burns up as many shoes, as pair of shoes as I do, you know? And that's what economic development is, it's out on the street. And knowing the companies, they begin to trust you, and you connect them up, and that's how you create, you know, more of a connectability and a solid development in micro-startups and job growth. But it's a concentrated way of doing it.
And I think, as he was mentioning, talking about connecting the universities, I mean, if Bellevue College happened to have a connection with whatever we land on, that's a great opportunity to get them more involved in our community and get more entrenched. And, you know, our longer-term goal of having that campus built might come a little sooner because of that. So not that that's our plan to do that, but, you know, you can see the partnerships that could grow from that and really then help other goals that we have as a city.
Thank you. I, I should have said this right at the very beginning. So the consideration of, of applying or becoming, adding an IPZ to our area is actually is a council goal, it's a past council goal. And one of the elements of that decision, part of, as we heard at the beginning here, is that really is having that, well, you said you talked to 700 companies in just a matter of months. And we, it's been brought in front of our council before about potentially funding a sector analysis. It's been asked for by the Economic Development Commission. And so that's the link between this subject. And it's really why, it's, it's a past goal that we haven't abandoned, and, and part of the process of getting there would be, I think the administration's going to be coming forward with an ask to fund a sector analysis via an agenda bill this year. So that's why it's on the agenda this evening. Now that makes sense, sorry for not bringing that up earlier, a little bit of context. We just discussed it in leadership last Wednesday. Does anybody have any other questions? Well, if that's it, then thank you, Jen. Thank you.
And I'm here to, like I said, to help, and hopefully you're successful.
Appreciate that very much. Thanks for coming up. Okay, next on our agenda. So next on our agenda is we're back to concurrency. And so Torsten is up at the, up at the podium, ready to speak. It's all yours.
Go ahead.
Yes, yeah, we can just get rolling here. I'll just say real quick, we, we obviously have a policy memo, another one in your packet, number of attachments in there. Attachment A, I'm just going to cover Randy's thunder here. Attachment A covers where we are, we added one check mark to it. But we're, we're moving our way through the process here of the, the initial timeline we laid out. And we are back tonight to share with you the next two model runs that we've done, the final two model runs under Torsten's contract. So with that, I'll turn it over to Torsten to explain what we did and why we did it and what it means.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, so tonight, I will just, ever so briefly, hopefully in five minutes or less, just remind everybody of what we talked about at the June workshop. I will go through the two model runs that you have not yet seen and that I'll be presenting tonight, both from assumptions, so what went into the model runs, and then the results of the model runs. And then lastly, we've got the policy decisions that we sort of start, started the conversation last time on, and we'd like to continue that conversation, both on level of service and mode split. So at the June workshop, we talked about what is transportation concurrency. It's a state requirement for growth management, but the state, the state does allow cities to develop their own concurrency system, their own levels of service. And so it can become very specific to, to, to each city, and they can develop their own thing. And then we talked a little bit about level of service, specifically intersection level of service, the grade from A to F, A being good, F not being so good. And then lastly, I introduced three model runs, the first being the existing conditions model run, reflecting our 2013 existing traffic counts and land use and transportation network. And then we use that model run, we calibrated it really well to existing conditions, and then we use that model to build into the future. And so then we, we, I had talked about two other future model runs in 2030, one being no action, which means not no land use action. In fact, we assumed all the planned growth in the city, but what we did assume in terms of no action was transportation improvements. So how bad would it get if we just stuck with the transportation system that we have today? And then lastly, the third model run that I talked about was an action model run where we included transportation improvements. And I'm going to run through some of those assumptions in the, in the, in the presentation later on. But for right now, I just wanted to ask if there are any questions or things that you don't remember about the last workshop that I could, we're good? All right. So I'm going to dive right into the, all the... So I'm going to dive right into the, all the model runs that we did and the assumptions, created a table so that you could do a quick and easy side-by-side sort of comparison of what went into each model run. The first variable is the year of analysis, and this one's pretty simple. For existing conditions, it's the existing year, which was 2013. And then for all the other model runs, the no action, and then each of the three action model runs, the year that we projected out to was 2030. In terms of land use, all of the model runs assume existing growth in the city. And I already found the first error. The existing model does not include vested growth, but all the other, the four, the no action, the Run One, Run Two, and Run Three, all include vested growth, which is development that's come in for an application, has been approved and is moving forward with development, but has not yet been built, okay? Those are all vested development is all included in the 2030 model runs, no action and Runs One through Three. And then lastly, there is an amount of growth that the city is planning for but has not yet come in the door, okay? So that's planned growth, and the exact same planned growth has been assumed for all four model runs. So really, land use is not a variable that we played with, with any of these model runs. We assume the same growth for all four 2030 model runs. However, one thing did come up at the last meeting, so I'm going to sidebar just a little bit on land use. We talked a little bit about whether or not the modeling that I do and the land use that I assume in my modeling is consistent with land use that's been documented elsewhere in the city in various planning documents. And so we did, over the last month, take a little sidebar and did some comparisons just so that we could present that to you and show you that we are indeed very close in our assumptions. They will not be exact, only because my data sources have to be different than the ones that the city has been using, only because I do it to a very fine sort of, I almost need to do it at the parcel level, and we don't have that kind of information at the city. So, so I have to use some other data sources in order to get my information. Needless to say, the, it turned out very close, which is a good thing. Residential units, in terms of existing residential units, the city is showing about just over fourteen thousand. I've got just over fifteen thousand residential units in, in my modeling area. Projected out to 2030, which is really the more important number, is we're within a hundred units or so, so very, very close there. In terms of business square footage, this one was a little bit tougher, only because I don't use square footage in my modeling, I use employees. But we were able to do some conversions and comparisons. City does most of their planning based on square footage, and I have to use employees. But irregardless, we did do some comparisons there. Again, in 2013, we are close, not exactly right. The city has about seven point six million square feet of commercial space. In my modeling effort, I've got about eight point one million square feet. But again, what's most important is what we're projecting in the future, and we're both square there, so fifteen point three versus fifteen point four million square feet. We're calling that pretty, pretty close for, for the effort that we're moving forward with. Are there any questions about the, the growth and the consistency amongst plans and the modeling effort? Great. Okay, transportation network. This is a variable that we played a lot with for the, for the three action model runs. All of the model runs, existing no action runs, One, Two, and Three, all include, of course, the existing transportation network that's out there today. In addition, the next level up would be developments that have been approved in the city, some of them have had to do some mitigation in order to be approved. So they've committed to do some transportation improvements, some of those improvements have not yet been seen in the field. So we've, we've got a list of those, and those were all included in the 2030 future model runs, including the no action model run, because we've got the land use for those developments included in the no action. Beyond that, though, Run One, which was the action model run that I shared with you last time, we started that model run with, well, what does the city have in place today? And that is your current 2014, 2019 TIP. So we took that list, that became the future transportation network for Run, Model Run One. For Runs Two and Three, we heard a lot of the discussion, we took it to heart, and we had a discussion about what it is that we wanted to, to do with Runs Model Two and Three based on the feedback that we got from you, plus our own knowledge and, and recommendations. And so what we did here is we took a hard look at the existing TIP and determined whether or not some of those existing TIP projects could be modified, either removed completely because they're not showing a real need anymore, given the land use patterns and everything that we're projecting for, for Issaquah, or because, or we altered a transportation improvement because we didn't feel like it was doing enough. So maybe we added some additional capacity to some of those improvements. So we did modify some of the TIP projects for Runs Two and Three. And then lastly, we took the stance on Run Two that we wanted to maintain the city's level of service D standard. We had the discussion, the policy discussion about level of service. We thought one run has to reflect, what if we stuck to level of service D? What, what, what would be the, the list of transportation improvements that would be required in order to meet that standard? And then lastly, so that's Run Two. And then Run Three, we took a step back and said, well, what if we allowed some level of service E and some level of service F intersections at locations where we think it's probably not physically feasible to do those, some of those transportation improvements that we identified in Run Two, or because it just isn't politically feasible to do some of those transportation improvements? Yes?
So is that the difference between Two and Three? Do they have the exact same type of TIP?
No. So I'm going to go into some of the differences in that in a sec. So modified TIP. What were the differences between Run One and, between Two and Three? First, for both Runs Two and Three, we removed three TIP projects, one being Newport Way widening west of SR nine hundred. The TIP project right now calls for a three-lane widening of that, that stretch of Newport Way. What we saw is that at most of the, at most of the intersections along that portion of Newport Way, there are already three lanes, and so widening in between those intersections to three lanes really doesn't buy you anything. So, so what we decided was that was probably a capacity project that's not needed. There is a component of that project that does some non-motorized improvements, we're not suggesting getting rid of those. We're really just talking about the capacity improvements as part of that project. T twenty-seven is a new connection up to the plateau from East Lake up to Issaquah-Pine Lake Road. And from Run One, we saw that that improvement saw very, very little traffic, and so it did little to relieve Issaquah-Fall City Road, and so we decided at the great expense that that project would be, it's not worth the city's money to invest in that, in that project. So we removed that project as well. And then lastly, there is a project, Mall Street Extension, that was primarily intended to be a mostly pedestrian-type corridor. As part of the CIP project, there was a request to go ahead and include two lanes on that as well. And what we found was the two lanes did carry some traffic, but again, at the expense that that project would cost to build those two lanes, we did not see that it was a good benefit cost investment. So we still believe the, the non-motorized portion should move forward, but the two lanes of traffic are probably not a good investment.
Torsten, I have a question.
Yes, sir?
So on the, the three projects that were removed, specifically on the Newport Way One, one of the, the planned but not yet vested projects would be on the Mole property for a rather large development. And, you know, there are certainly aspects of T twenty-one that probably are unnecessary even with that development. As you mentioned, many of the intersections, it's already pretty wide, but that specific portion of the corridor with a very large planned development, by eliminating the project completely, was there any consideration given to the fact that you would have a huge influx of traffic near Oak Crest and Fifty Fourth at that end of the corridor?
Yeah, so we do know that there's something planned for that, for that property, and we've built into the land use that's in all four 2030 model runs, the, at least what we've seen as, you know, what folks are coming in the door with. We've had several applicants on that particular property. So over the years, we, we have accounted for in this model run, in all four model runs, in fact, land use that we think is probably realistic for what's going to come in the door on that particular project, and so we've accounted for the traffic associated with that. Remember that when that development comes in, wherever there is a driveway or wherever they plan access, there will have to be a transportation study for that, and so if there's a signal associated with their driveway and turn lanes associated with their driveway, that will be required as part of SEPA. But beyond that, we've taken into account the capacity of the road plus the traffic. Great. For Run Two, Project T fifteen in your current TIP is, is widening Newport Way from Maple to Sunset. Roughly, in, in portions of it, it's three lanes, two lanes in one direction, one in the other direction, and then in other locations, it includes some turn lanes, but it also includes three roundabouts along that corridor as well, so a pretty significant capacity improvement. For Run Two, if you recall, we had a number of level of service, I'm sorry, for Run One, we had a number of level of service failures along Front Street. We all know that probably widening Front Street is not an option. What we did think would be an option is widening Newport Way as sort of, and I hate to use the word, bypass of Front Street. We thought that was probably the most logical place where we could maybe get people off of Front Street and using a different corridor. And so with Model Run Two, what we decided to do in order to fix Front Street is widen Newport Way to five lanes in that section. So that's a modification of an existing TIP project for Run Two. For Run Three, we did not assume that widening, we went back to the original description for, for Newport Way in that section, so still the three-lane, two-to-three-lane scenario with the roundabouts. For Run Three, the modifications that we took were at Dogwood and Front Street. Now that we don't have the bypass on Newport Way in Run Three, we did look at a small channelization fix which we think can occur within the existing pavement and right-of-way, and it would be simply adding a southbound right-turn sort of pocket to separate, you know, that right-turn movement at Dogwood and Front. And then lastly, Project T thirty, if any of you are familiar with the big one, which is the overcrossing, the Twelfth Avenue overcrossing of I ninety. The TIP project describes a five-lane crossing with direct access ramps connecting to I ninety. We went back to what was actually assumed in the central Issaquah Plan analysis, which was a three-lane crossing with no connection to I ninety. And so that's what we assumed in Run Three. So that will be a reduction in both cost and capacity of that crossing of I ninety at Twelfth Avenue. Okay, for, there were a number of reasons why we went back to the original assumption, and we can talk about those maybe later when we have some more time, but, yeah, we can build it, by the way, in, in, in any alternative to the width that we ultimately want it to be. So if we ultimately want it to be five lanes with direct access ramps, we could certainly build it at least as a first phase, that wide, but only use the three lanes, and the rest of the pavement or structure could be used for non-motorized facilities or parks or whatever it is that you'd like to use it for. Any questions about those? Okay, so those are the modifications.
I have a question.
Yes.
Just wanted to make sure I understood that last point. So what we have in our TIP versus what we did the analysis for the CIP for the overcrossing were two different things.
The reason for that, I'll just go ahead and talk about it, is the I ninety corridor study, which I think probably a number of you are familiar with, which was done by the state, looked at, you know, a long stretch of I ninety, including Issaquah. And there is a recommendation for the Twelfth, Twelfth Avenue overcrossing, but there are actually two alternatives presented in the corridor study. One is the three-lane version without direct access ramps, the other is the five-lane version with direct access ramps. The thought was to include in the TIP the most expensive version to be conservative, and then just to plan for long term.
Thank you.
I, I also think that the chances of the state providing any funding to a crossing that doesn't include direct access to benefit I ninety is far slimmer than if the state gets a benefit by having direct access ramps. So, you know, the three-travel lane option and no direct access may be cheaper for us, but it may actually be more expensive for us because we may not get the outside funding that we need for a project that would include direct access ramps. So just a thought there.
I guess this is my first opportunity to stir the pot a little on this, because I think it can be even more complex. Torsten made the remark that you could build it for five, but not use it for five. Right. Isn't that going to cost most of the money that it would have cost to build five? And if we're going to build it for five and use it for three, is the state going to participate in the funding? So I don't think tonight we're in any position to answer that. What we wanted to show you essentially is what happens to the level of service and the network as a whole and at individual intersections if we make a series of different assumptions about that very expensive project, one of which is definitely less expensive but probably doesn't get any state funding, and we want you to see what that does to the level of service.
How did the Mercer Island project work? How much did it cost and how much of it? I realize that I ninety was, I mean, it's part of the decision to run, to be able to run ninety across the island, but how much did it cost and how much did Mercer Island take into that?
I honestly don't know in Mercer Island. You're talking about I ninety itself? Mercer Island didn't pay one-
That's the mother of all over crossings, right? That's, that's the overcrossing that's so large as to-
Mercer Island didn't want I ninety, so-
Right.
They, they didn't pay a penny.
They were wanting it. I know they didn't want it, but they didn't pay a penny.
No, that's a, that's a state, I mean, it's a federal highway, so.
I get that.
Yeah. The, the overcrossing is not a federal highway.
One of the things that we talked about with the state when the draft study was still under consideration was the impact the overcrossing would have on SR nine hundred. And so even though it may not have direct connection to the freeway, if there was a significant enough benefit where it was cheaper for them to build the overcrossing rather than make some improvements to nine hundred, that there may be an opportunity for more, or for, opportunity for funding. So they'd really have to do kind of the cost-benefit analysis and determine whether it would be more beneficial to build the overcrossing just to handle the local traffic and get it off of nine hundred.
So-
Yes.
This is a higher-level question, I guess, than just specific streets, but one of the issues I'm having conceptually with all these different changes in the model runs and so forth is all of these model runs, each of them, One, Two, Three, they all assume a certain amount of growth, but you've changed the transportation network in each of the model runs. So what I'm having a hard time with conceptually, and I'll try to put it into words, is the idea that over the next sixteen years, you know, we're not going to have all of these projects. They're not all going to get built. A fraction of them might get built, realistically speaking, even if we had impact fees through the roof. So if we're not going to have all these improvements built, but you're still assuming all one hundred percent build-out growth, I'm having a hard time matching that up in terms of understanding which of these models is the most reliable for matching up to the growth projections, because there seems to be no change on this side of the ledger, but you're changing all these variables on the other side of the ledger. And, you know, I, I guess I'm, I'm not clear on, yes, we're basing our growth projections on our various studies and our plans and that sort of thing, but we're never going to have all the projects within that timeframe either. So it's not like the growth's going to all of a sudden go whomp and just appear in the next sixteen years. It's going to be slow and eventual, and in various parts of the city where some of these improvements in some parts of the city may have a much more significant impact on the level of service. And so if you, if the Mole property develops, you're going to want transportation improvements on the west end of the city to deal with that, and all these other issues are not, you know, on- And all these other issues are not, you know, on, towards the Highlands are not gonna be as significant. Conversely, if you have major build-out of the Microsoft slash Polygon property, you're gonna wanna have potentially improvements closer to that in the west end. Do you see what I'm getting at? Is your, your model assumes all this development is just gonna go whomp.
No.
So, so, it, it, first of all, it doesn't all happen overnight. It's a 16-year plan. But before I make a further comment, let me ask you, why do you think that we wouldn't see these projects done in a 16-year period?
All of these?
Mm-hmm.
The, the timeline of 16 years, given the amount of projects that have been accomplished over a similar timeline, seems very difficult with the financial picture that is being presented.
Understand completely, okay. We're not basing the future on the past. We can't. If we're going to take a look at ourselves in the mirror and say, "Well, we've just never been able to build more than $5 or $10 million worth of projects over a five- or 10-year period," we shouldn't be having this conversation at all. We can't have simplified concurrency unless we have these projects. We have to be motivated to do the projects. We have to have the funding, and you've engaged me and Diane to come back to you and talk about the funding, about the piece that the impact fees don't pay for. And if at the end of this, we've presented a package to you that is believable and fundable, and there are enough engineers and contracting firms to build them, and if the amounts that you're asked to charge different parts of the economy for their share are things you're willing to do, then the past is a very poor predictor, as they say in the stock market, of what the future will be like. But if we can't present that package to you, if you say, "Well, it's brilliant. We need all those projects, but we can't afford to pay for them. We won't ever generate that kind of money." Believe me, Diane and I are not gonna be suggesting to you that this is gonna be funded 50% from grants, but grants aren't there for that. So, we're gonna have some hard conversations about it. So, that's why I asked, you know, how come we feel that way? Because I, I agree, we have felt that way about our past. But right now, we need to set that aside for a little while and experiment with what the future could look like if we could put all the pieces together. And this is an important piece, a very large project list, possibly more expensive than the current TIP. And the missing pieces are how high do the fees go? And what other money can we produce to pay for that? And we'll be talking in-depth about that at both the September and October work sessions. Today, we just want you to talk to us just about the projects. Are they good projects? Are they projects that make sense to you? Are the levels of service the outcomes that you want? You know, what kind of mode split are we doing? Because we're not asking you to approve this whole thing today. We're just focused on this one question.
Thank you.
Okay, so, then there was, so that was modifying existing projects that were in the TIP. In addition to that for both Runs Two and Three, we had to assume some additional projects in order to get rid of some of those level service E and F intersections. And, and in case of Run Two, try and get rid of almost all of them, if we could. So, there are a list of intersections here. I will quickly go through them. You have a very detailed description of them in your packets. And so, I don't wanna go through the minutia of, of each of these, but I'll quickly go through the, the list on the map. So, A, Project A is at Sunset. And Second, it's simply a signalized intersection at that location. Okay, Project B is over on SR-900. And clearly not on SR-900, as it should be. But it is a widening of SR-900 in Run Two to three lanes in each direction. In Run Three, we did not assume that widening, three lanes in each direction. Okay, Project E is basically an intersection widening at the I-90 off-ramp at SR-900. In Run Two, we assumed a significant intersection widening at that, at that intersection, so much so that we'd have to rebuild the SR-900 bridge itself to include an additional lane on that, on that bridge. For Run Three, we did not assume that significant improvement. In fact, all we assumed was one additional turn lane on the ramp itself. Project C is a widening, or really a continuing HOV lane, or conversion, I believe, of an HOV lane on SR-900 for, for Run Two because now we'd have the direct access ramps at the 12th Street overcrossing, and so, we didn't see the need to continue an HOV facility on SR-900. Yes?
In general, how does the funding differ for 900 as a result of it being state-led?
Well, you're eligible to go ask for money from the state.
Do they ever in practice come to us and say, "Hey, we think we wanna improve this"?
Oh, sure. I mean, the, a big, a big portion of the widening on SR-900 was a state, a state project, you know?
So, they led on that one, not us?
Right. There was a development at the same time that was coming in. They had some mitigation, so there was some city, you know, involvement as well. But yes, it was mostly a state-led project. Project D is a widening of Simamish slash 56 to three lanes in each direction. I already talked about EF is, and, and by the way, D is assumed in both, both alternatives, both Run Two and Three. Project F is a widening of Issaquah Falls City Road from the existing two lanes in each direction to three lanes in each direction in that, on that, on that section. Project G is a widening of Black Nugget Road to two lanes in each direction. Project H is down here at Front. And Second, it's some turn lane improvements at that location.
Do you wanna comment on the difference between G?
Oh, yes, sorry, G. One of the G projects in Run Two is widening the entire stretch. And that's for Run Two. For Run Three, it's a significantly smaller project and really just a turn lane and additional left turn lane at that location. Thank you, Randy. H? Yes?
And it's a letter D that inspires me to ask this question about the North Issaquah street improvement plans. Is this assuming that those are all going to be done? You know, because I'm thinking about the-
Yes, it does assume, yes.
And Torsten, H is just a light?
H?
Second and Sunset?
It's some turn, turn lane capacity improvements. The HI is up at 51st and East Lake Simamish Parkway. It's an additional turn lane at that intersection. And then, lastly, J is in the Highlands. And really, it's just a re-timing of the signal. So, the ones that don't have a one or a two next to it are assumed in both model runs. The ones with a one or two differ by model run where, one, the bigger project is always Run Two, and the smaller project is always Run Three. Yes?
We had it to do over. We probably have labeled them two and three to go with the two model runs.
Maybe.
And, and Torsten's already made the remark, but if you wanna refresh your memory during the rest of our conversation or after this meeting, your pen, your attachment E had the whole list, and then, the pages behind it had the detailed descriptions he's just summarized.
Okay, yes.
Thank you. Go back one slide.
Yes. Yeah, that's not working, previous. There you go.
Thank you. So, the re-timing in Highlands?
Yes.
Says just simply a re-timing. Is there, is that something we can just do? Do we need to have that on the TIP?
Really doesn't need to be on the TIP list. I just wanted to disclose everything.
Okay. So, can we do that?
It doesn't need to be done right now. At some point between now and 2030-
Okay, thank you.
It would need to be done.
Torsten, I think there's a lot of respekts as well.
There really, there really, I don't think there was. Would you mind really quickly, just looking at Project, what was it, J, the last one?
Signal phasing improvement.
Yeah, so I don't think we need to do any restructuring. Okay. Okay, the other variable that we did play with, so, again, Josh pointed out, we did not change land use. We did change the transportation network from one run to the next. And the other variable that we did change and play with is the mode share, okay? So, in Run One, if you recall, we assumed a 5% change in, in mode share by 2030 for that set of transportation improvements and network. We only assumed that within the CIP, so the 900-acre sort of urban core. We did not assume any kind of change in mode share outside of that area. What we did hear loud and clear at the last meeting and from the discussion about mode share is there was a faction that said, "Wow, we're being too aggressive." And there was a faction that said, "We're not being aggressive enough." So, with Run Two, we put in the, the assumptions that we were being too aggressive with the Run One assumption. And so, we assumed a simple 1% change in growth. The 1%, if you believe PSRC's existing mode shift numbers for Issaquah would bring you to that magic 17% that we've all heard about from the CIP, okay? So, that's why we came, that's why we used the 1%. Again, we, and we only assumed that within the Central Issaquah District. Outside of that, we assumed no change in, in mode shift. And then, for Run Three, we took the other side of the coin and said, "Let's be a little bit more aggressive. Let's go with what was originally intended by the CIP with all the planning that was done for that and assume that 10% shift that was assumed from the CIP inside the urban core. Outside the urban core, let's look to PSRC. What does PSRC think is gonna be accomplished outside the core?" That number was 3%, and so, that's the number we assumed for Run Three. Okay, I'm gonna talk a little bit more about mode share in a sec. But before I go to the next slide, we pointed out before, there are a different set of intersections that we're analyzing from run to run. That's all dependent on what the transportation network is. So, from existing, where there are 67 intersections that we monitor today, in 2030, there would be 74 based on the TIP if we did nothing. And then, for Runs One, Two, and Three, the additional projects that we've assumed with each of those, they vary between 80 and 83 intersections. Okay? All right, mode share, let's go back to that. You asked us to do some homework on that as well from the last meeting, so I'm gonna talk a little bit about that. We shared with you last time that PSRC did a household activity survey, and you wanted to know some more information about it. So, we did what we could to get some information about that. First of all, this, this, the survey was done in 2006, and 4,700 households were, were sampled in the four-county region, okay? There is no way to know how many of those 4,700 were in Issaquah. There just aren't records on that, and it's not documented in the report. So, unfortunately, that was one of the questions you asked. It's one of the questions I can't answer. I'm very sorry about that. However, they did, the sample size was selected such that they felt like they were getting a statistically significant number of data points for each of the jurisdictions within their four-county region. So, so what I would say is, there was, there probably aren't, you know, you, you were probably hoping for hundreds and hundreds of data points. It's probably not that. But there are enough that they felt like they were getting a statistically significant representation for Issaquah, okay? So, based on that and what they could get from that survey, what you do is, they are, they're collecting demographics, but they're also collecting travel patterns. And it's usually over the course of a week, and you record every single trip that you made over that week and what time you did it and, and all of that. And all of that's used to calibrate their existing conditions model, just like we calibrated the existing Issaquah model. They have a model for mode share, a separate model for mode share, and they had to calibrate that to existing conditions, and that's what they use the survey information for. Based on that, what they found and what's built into their 2010 existing conditions model, for Issaquah within the central district, they're showing about a 15.8% mode shift today, okay? And then, outside of the central district, they're showing about 21.3%. Now, you're probably all scratching your heads. Why would it be that way? And the answer is, where are your residential trips today? And where does a transit trip start? It starts at your home. Because if you're already at work and you drove to work, you're probably not gonna change your mind and take transit home, right? So, the transit decision, which is a big piece of that percent, but not all of it, is usually made in the morning when you're headed to work. Are you gonna take transit that day, or are you gonna drive your car? So, so that's, it's, it's focused on where the residential trips are, and your residential trips are outside that orange area today. In the future, they're gonna be mostly in that orange area, okay? Was there a question? Okay, great. Okay, so we went, we tried to find a second data point for you so that maybe you'd have a little bit more trust in the PSRC data. There, we did find a second data point, but it has some limitations. So, I'm gonna go through those. The Census Bureau does a three-year study every three years. It's called the American Community Survey. It's also sort of a, a travel survey as well. The, the limitation to this data set, however, is that when it reports out information for Issaquah, it will only include data on residents in Issaquah. So, if you are someone who lives in Bellevue but works in Issaquah, you're not part of this data set, okay? So, criteria one, you have to be a resident of Issaquah for them to even put you in the data set. Criteria two is that they only look at work trips. And there are a lot of other trips out there, to the grocery store, to the daycare, to the movies, to the service center, you name it, lots of other trips. Now, in the PM peak hour, a lot of the trips are work trips, and that's what we're worried about, but still not all of them. So, when you take into account the first two restrictions, we're really, the data set is really only considering about one-third of the total PM peak hour trips, okay? Nevertheless, of those one-third of the trips, what they found is that in 2012, the mode share is about almost 30%, okay? So, significantly high. The other two-thirds of the trips that they are not collecting data on, remember, is not zero. It is something. It's just they don't collect information on it. Now, whether it would make the 30% go up or whether it make it come down, my guess is it would make it come down, but it's not gonna, you know, be zero. So, just remember that this, it's another data point. It's not perfect, but, but it does show, hey, we're, we're a lot higher than the 7% that everybody's got in their mind that we've been saying for the last, I don't know, 18 years that I've been working for Issaquah. So, 18 years have passed, and 7% has grown, and we're probably in that 15 to 20% range, somewhere in there today. Okay? Any questions about that?
In the PSRC data, could you just page up one more time?
Yeah.
Page up. Do they, do they, with their data, do they include, you know, plus or minus? You know, here's what we're calculating, but the range of error is?
They might have that information somewhere. The 15.8 and the 21.3 are numbers that we pulled out of the model. We didn't pull it out of the survey data, if you will, because again, I couldn't isolate Issaquah data points out of the survey data. So, what we, what we can do, though, is they provided us the PSRC model. We can isolate Issaquah. We can isolate the sub-area. And then, we can determine what the mode share is within that, within that, within those zones, what's built into the model for existing conditions. So, so that's how I obtained this. So, I, I can't give you a plus or minus.
But would it be, would it be accurate or worthy of our assessment of this information to think, okay, but it could be 3% lower or 3% higher?
It could be. So, I'm gonna go to my, my next slide, and we're gonna talk a little bit about that. So, regardless of what you believe, some of you might believe, "Yeah, we're at that 15 to 20%." Some of you might believe, "No, we haven't even met the 7% yet, okay?" Honestly, whatever you believe doesn't affect my modeling at all because I don't use those numbers. I don't, I don't, I don't take my model and, and somehow adjust it to reflect an existing mode share. I do take my model to adjust a future mode share, which is the delta, okay? So, I have, my- So I have, my, my existing model, remember, we calibrated to an existing model, which was based on 2013 counts. Built into those 2013 counts is whatever the mode share is. Okay? If it's 20%, it's built into those counts. If it's 7%, it's built into those counts. Whatever the number is and whatever you believe it to be, it is part of my existing model. Okay?
I think something that wasn't clear to me when I first started learning about this from Torsten is that what he's talking about in counts is not counts of all trips. The model doesn't have a count of a number of pedestrian trips, another count of a number of transit trips, another count of a number of work at home, non-trips. The model's counting vehicles. And so if we have the current accurate count of the existing vehicles, then we know that whatever number of people are not in vehicles is the baseline. And all we need to know is whether there's going to be more of them in vehicles or fewer of them in vehicles in the future. That's how the model makes the adaptation. So where Torsten is going with this is, because he's counting vehicles, he just needs to know when he projects a future number of vehicles, should he project, project a little bit fewer because we think we're going to be better with pedestrians and bike? Or should he leave it alone? Or should he project a little bit more in vehicles because we don't think we can sustain the vehicles, pedestrian and bikes? That's, now, I'm hoping Torsten's nodding behind me and saying, yeah, that's approximately how it works. That's what he's taught me so far.
That is it. Thank you, Randy. So what I do use PSRC for is as a guide, or the PSRD data is a guide. What does PRC, PSRC predict would be the change from existing to the future? And what we found from PSRC is, they predict very little change for Issaquah. I think it was 2% in the central and 3% outside of that. Those numbers seem small, right? One thing I told you last time, I'm going to reiterate today, is PSRC does not have your central Issaquah plan built into their model. So they have no idea that you're planning an urban core, an urban center sort of district. Now, they do know that now, but it wasn't in their modeling assumptions at the time that they were building that model that we're using right now. So, so I have that as a data point. I have that as a guide. I have that to share with you, that they, they're predicting somewhere between a 2% and 3% change, okay, in, in mode share for Issaquah. And so that's what I use. And what's important to me is the delta. What is it that I'm going to assume for the future as the change in, in mode share? Okay? So really, all of you can walk away with, in your mind, today is 7%. We're going to do a 10% change, so it's 17%. One person might walk away with that. Someone else can say 20%. It's 20% today and we're going to do a 10% change, it's going to be 30%. Regardless, it's the delta that matters in my modeling and that's all that really you guys should be worried about, is that's what you're trying to achieve, is that delta. Okay? All right. So I am done talking about what went into the models. Before I move into the results, are there any questions, concerns, issues? Yes, sir.
Were any of the, the minor type traffic improvements included that we talked about last time, just small type things? I know signal timing, you know, with the Highlands we talked about, but were those included in either one, two, or three?
Yes, thank you, Josh, for bringing that up. Yes, we, I don't list them only because like that Project J, I believe it was, which is the signal timing up at the Highlands, those types of projects typically don't show up in a, in a TIP. So I didn't list those, but we do, Josh, that every, for every model run that we do, we assume, we re-time every single intersection so that it takes into account whatever shifts in traffic occur or whatever. So we optimize all the signals. So yes, we did take that into account. Good? Okay, so all of you, so now I'm going into the results. How did, how did, how did we fare with these model runs? All of you have, I think it's a two-page summary of levels of service at 80-some intersections, very small writing. It looks kind of like what's up on the screen, except this has been truncated. I'm not going to go through that whole list, but you have all the details in your packets. What I am going to do is a very brief summary of what's on that list.
One other thing about this list, the first three columns you saw at our June meeting, no data changes, it is what it is. There was the existing and then there was the growth with no new transportation and then there was model run number one. So now, what's being added here is the results and the summary slide will get, tell you the outcome of doing the two additional model runs.
I'm not going to, I don't want to confuse it, but existing and Run One did not change. No action did change from the last time that we talked, based on some things that we did with Run Two and Three and some changes that we made. They're very minor changes, so don't, don't get too hung up on those. Okay, so the results of each alternative. So today, we're looking at about 78% of your intersections operating at level service A through C. A small portion, 16% is at level service D and the rest, 3% at E or F. If we built, if we, if all the land use came by 2030 and we did absolutely nothing to the transportation system network except mitigation that was required by development, we're looking at, you know, going from 78 to 42% of those intersections A through C and then another almost 20% at level service D. This is the big kicker though, like 38% of your intersections are, are at E or F. Okay, so expected, right? And of course, you're not going to do nothing, right? But we need a baseline to compare everything to. Okay? So, so Run One, which we presented to you last time, is, is basically your TIP, what you have on the books today with the growth that you've anticipated. And if we ran with that, we're looking at about 19 to 20% of your intersections operating at level service E or F.
At our June meeting, we, the vocabulary was there are 17 failing intersections. Okay, there were 27 in the no action, there were still 17 in the model run number one. So that's what that percentage is, is those 17.
Mm-hmm. Run Two, we tried to fix everything we could. Okay? We could not fix everything. We tried to be reasonable. There are projects, trust me, that we included in Run Two that I probably still don't think are really reasonable, but they could be built. There are probably, to get the last remaining, I believe it was four intersections from level service E to D would require some improvements that I don't think are feasible. So I couldn't get it all the way there, but we got pretty close. And I would say the transportation improvements that were assumed in Run Two, in your briefing memo, would be a fairly significant increase in cost on your TIP. Okay?
Fairly significant is 50%?
300 million to about 450 or higher. Okay? Run Three is really comparable to Run Two in terms of the number of intersections. We, we, instead of four level service E, we've got six intersections that are at E or F, three at E, three at F. But in general, you've got almost the same amount of level service D intersections, or A through D, sorry. So very comparable, but the level of improvements that I've assumed in level, in Run Three are significantly less than Run Two. So much, so that I think it would be fairly comparable to your current TIP with us having reduced some of the TIP projects and then adding some of the additional. I think there's probably a chance of another maybe 20% increase or less on your current TIP with that run. Okay? We don't have hard numbers for you, but we wanted to give you some idea of what the cost implications are. Yes, Josh?
So I'm trying to understand between one and three specifically. I get what you're doing on two. So maybe you could explain just really succinctly the difference between one and three because I noticed that three overall seems to be, I'll use the word better, you know, in terms of the V over C. And, but there's just a couple intersections that are actually worse than one and the V over C increases slightly, although it doesn't change the LOS in a number of other ones. So you would sort of assume, well, three's better because when you look at the summary, it's got far fewer F intersections, but then there's certain places in the city where that doesn't hold true. Is there, is it because you made one tweak here, so it caused a domino there or?
There are, well, I mean, for the most part, Run One improvements, most all of them are in Run Three. So there are additional improvements in Run Three. There are the three that I talked about that we removed, but those had very little traffic on them. So I don't think it's, if I understand your question, I don't think it's a matter of we, we neglected to do an improvement in, in Run Three somewhere and therefore we shifted traffic somewhere else. I don't think there's a lot of that going on.
There may not be a lot of it, but there were some key, and back to this is my cheat sheet, okay? There were some key projects in the existing TIP that we took out in Run Two and then we took out a different list in Run Three and I think that may be contributing to a piece of that. It won't explain all of them.
The, the big one would be the 12th Avenue overcrossing. Remember, in Run One is the five lane with direct access ramps. In Run Three, we have the three lane overcrossing. Okay, no direct access ramps. Okay? All right, looking at it a little bit differently. Now, these are the numbers that Randy was, was pointing out. Instead of percentages, which I like to use because of the changing number of intersections from one alternative to the other, this is the hardcore number. So Run Three had the six, the three and three level service E and three level service F intersections. Run Two had four level service E. Run One had the 17 that you remember from last time. Eight E and nine F intersections. Okay? So where are those failures? So for Run Two, the four level of service E intersections are at Front and Sunset, then over on SR 900 at Newport Way and SR 900. Then two are up on the plateau on Issaquah Falls City Road, both at Black Nugget and at Issaquah Pine Lake Road. Okay? And remember that at 12 and 13, I included a three-lane widening already at those two intersections and that only got it to level service E. Okay? For alternative three or Run Three, the six locations are, again, at Sunset and Front. The two up on the plateau that we talked about before, but now they're level service F instead of level service E. A new one that pops up is at Talis and SR 900. And that one is, is, has nothing to do with Talis itself. It has to do with the through traffic on SR 900. The intersection at SR 900 and the eastbound off ramp. Then 56th, Semamish, 12th, there's I think four different road names that come into that intersection, intersection four is level service E. Okay, one, two, three, four, five, six. I think I covered them all. Okay? Yes?
Randy, did you say that the increase in cost was 50% for number two?
Two.
And is there as simple a comparison in cost for number three?
20% or less.
Okay, thank you.
And it's 50% or more for?
And these are rough, rough guesses because we haven't wanted to take the time and spend the time and budget getting more refined until we had a sense of whether, for example, you have an appetite for any E and F intersections or not. And that's what today's conversation is about, is kind of the policy level. And depending on where you send us, then when, before we come back to you in September, we will get more specific about these estimates. With the caveat, just like you see them in your TIP, they'll be general planning level estimates. This is not 30% engineering level stuff where it's real precise, but it'll be good enough for you to understand the approximate bill and the amount that you have to raise and the amount that development will pay.
Okay?
Can I ask you a question around, forgive me, it's a little bit broader question, but it gets around existing conditions. Delay is average delay at peak time?
Mm-hmm. PM peak hour.
Is, what's that?
PM peak hour.
PM peak, okay. So what do you do about, what do, what do we do about outliers? And let me give you a specific example. We had a meeting in this room that was starting at 6:00 PM and I left Walgreens at 5:26. And at 6:09, which is almost 45 minutes later, I was still approaching Gilman on East Lake Sam. So I gave up and, and went around and got over to Newport and it only took me an hour to get here. And it's 1.2 miles and it's supposed to take four minutes, five minutes in traffic and it took me almost an hour. And I don't actually normally, other than council meetings, I'm not normally home before like seven or eight o'clock, so I don't get to see this very much. So I believe that the average delays are what you're saying here, but it also, it took me an hour to get a mile and a quarter. So how do we, clearly there are one sigmas or two sigmas outliers that, that are wildly higher than what we've got here as, as delays. And how do we, how do we think about that? Because it's, I would not characterize that as level of service C or D or even F. Well, Rainier was closed, but...
That, plus it was last Tuesday where the regional traffic was a nightmare because there were, like a lane on I-90 was closed, was everywhere.
Was there?
Yeah. Yeah, and there, oh, there was a, and there was a huge, no, that was the, the accident was the next night. So it is an outlier, but it's an extreme.
Guys aren't looking to see, I assume like, oh, if they get closer to downtown, there'll be some horrific accident or there'll be a power outage or there'll be, and there was nothing. It just...
Yeah.
So Tola?
Two, oh, go ahead.
I don't think we're going to plan for those outliers.
But I'm wondering, I mean...
You're talking about a regular outlier.
Yeah, well, that's, but my question is really, how do you deal with, what's the, what I think was the one sigmas and the two sigmas? There's average and then how, how much is, what does a one sigma look like? And is a one sigma way out there and it just so happens that there's lots of days that there's nothing and then every fifth day or sixth day or eighth day is, is a huge whammy?
So a couple of things. There, there are definitely two different questions that were asked and you answered one of them. We don't plan for events. So if there's an accident, if there's, you know, salmon days, whatever, you know, those kinds of things we don't typically plan for. I mean, certainly you can if you want to, but, but in general, we don't. So that, that's number one. Number two, so your, your other half of the question is, okay, I'm not talking about those kinds of days. So again, when I'm showing a level service D, let's say in an intersection, could very well be that a particular movement is level service F at that intersection, but the rest of them are level service A or B or C or whatever. And so the weighted average of that intersection is D. Okay? Could very well be that you hit every single level service F movement going from point A to point B. And certainly if you took Front Street, which is what I heard you take, that is, I mean, does anybody here, do most of you avoid Front Street unless you're trying to go to Front, somewhere on Front Street? I mean, Front Street is definitely one of those that you just, you know, is definitely the outlier.
I just add up these delays and it adds up to like four or five minutes through, to the route that I was looking at and add up without.
Right. And that's because you're doing the average at each one of those intersections. And that's what I'm doing when I do averages here. But yes, you certainly could have been at the peak movement or the worst movement at every one of those intersections or at least most of them.
Did I mention at the June meeting, my definition of average? I used this for the first time back in the 70s or 80s in Seminole County, Florida, trying to explain about these delays and, you know, I was just, nobody was getting it and I just blurted out, got quoted in the newspaper for it. Well, you know about averages. If I stick my head in the refrigerator and my feet in the oven, on the average, I'm comfortable.
Yes?
Well, I want to piggyback on, on Tola's comment because there are, and I know that Tola's also even talked about the AM peak in certain locations. And there are certain places around the city that I don't think we, we accommodate for in terms of traffic patterns. And so, you know, I, I'll give you an anecdotal example, which is if you're taking 900 northbound and it's a weekend, I mean, it's, it's Carmageddon. You can't get from Newport to the state park, you know, at 12th Avenue. I mean, yeah, it's, it's ridiculous. I mean, we, we ended up taking a ride on mall and going all the way up Gilman just to get to exit, you know, 17 to avoid getting to I-90 because it was 20 minutes from Talis Drive to Gilman. So, you know, that, that's not a PM peak. It's not a Monday through Friday. And, you know, I think as part of this analysis, when we talk about planning for capacity and so forth, there are other times and other places that don't fall within the PM peak Monday through Friday commute. And any... And anyone who sits on nine hundred northbound on a Saturday or Sunday can tell you something needs to be done to help fix that situation. And whether it's signal timing or turn lane capacity or something there, none of this accounts for the situation. So is it an outlier? I don't know if it's an outlier because it seems to happen every weekend, you know, but it's certainly not PM peak Monday through Friday. So there's a corollary to, I think, what Tola's saying with his one-off experience versus something that doesn't fit within this modeling.
Okay, so let's start with AM peak hour. We do, we don't, we don't analyze AM peak hour. We don't analyze the weekend. AM peak hour though, we, although I don't have a model for it, in every recommendation that I do, I think about the AM peak. And in particular, roadways that have that huge directional split where the PM, it's all in one direction and the AM, it's the other direction. So, so there are some improvements that I recommended on the list that are not needed for the PM peak hour. I anticipate they're needed for the AM peak hour, okay? Even though I don't have a model to tell me that, but I'm using my engineering judgment. So, so I've taken into account that. Now, the weekend, that is a policy decision. If the city wants to plan and build for another peak period besides PM peak hour, we can certainly do that. Realize it's a big expense to do that from a planning standpoint, but it will probably also be a TIP expense. There will be additional projects that needed to be added to the TIP. So certainly it's, I get it. I've heard, I've heard it, you know, over the last fifteen years, always the questions about AM and the other peaks and what do we do? The answer is if you want to plan for those, we can do it. But to date, we haven't made the policy decision to do that.
And we don't have the counts outside of the PM peak. That's the data you're working with. Because we, that was our policy and directed you to only collect that data.
Correct. I wouldn't have collected counts unless it was a policy decision to do those, yeah.
We've kicked around a goal in the past, I believe. I have discussed a goal around whether we wanted to capture AM peak. Because it's been an issue of interest to me because it affects the parents a lot, particularly like around IMS and northbound Iskwa Hobart Road, right? Where you get the combination of all those, all those folks coming in from the south and you've got all the parents trying to bring their kids into IMS. And I think, I think we went so far as to look at the price tag for it at some point, didn't we, Bob? I think we did. I just don't remember what the price tag is, so. But I think you're right. I mean, we've decided to stay primarily at the PM peak just because that's been kind of the base model and policy we've had for a long time.
If I might, I work with, just with public agencies, cities, counties and districts. And I've been doing it for almost forty-five years. So I'm going to just step outside of transportation just for a minute to remind you as council members that you have to make these same tough tradeoff decisions about every service that you provide your constituents. And so the questions you're asking are great and the technical team could run with and do AM peak. We could do weekends. We might need counts to do it. There's a bunch of issues with it. But in your strong desire to both personally be able to move around town and on behalf of the people that elected you, let them move around town at all hours of the day and all the destinations, you're stuck with that other tradeoff about how much things cost. And so I'll just put it in a different context than transportation. Pick one for me. Parks, police, fire? Nothing that you can do as a council. You can't put a fire truck at every intersection. You can't have enough patrol officers in the police department to make sure there's never an accident and never a burglary. And when we talk about having level of service D or better twenty-four, seven, every day of the week in all directions, that's beginning to sound like a zero crime rate and a zero fire loss to me.
But that's not what we're talking about. We're talking about not having an hour delay to go a mile. Right? I don't think we are talking about level of service A everywhere. I don't think anybody said anything like that.
Okay, and I didn't say A. I hope I didn't. I thought I said D, which is the goal that you've set for yourself. And I agree completely that there are going to be ugly anomalies, whether there was an accident or a not. Maybe I was more focused on Josh's point that at specific alternates to the time that we're analyzing, there are known problems that affect you and your constituents and we have the ability to solve it. But what will happen is we'll come back and say, this isn't fifty percent more than the TIP. It's a hundred and twenty percent more than the TIP and we're going to be back to hard priority decisions. And not pushing back here, I'm reminding that the hardest thing you do as council is try and figure out where to make those best tradeoffs. And as technicians, our job is to help give you the most choices, the most understandable and sort of the most efficient outcome that we know how to help you craft. But we're willing to go back to it. But, oh, I absolutely wasn't speaking to the stuck in traffic for an hour and forty-five or an hour, whatever it was, when it should have been a five-minute trip. That is different.
A question, Torsten, and I'm looking at, right now, I'm sort of looking at Sunset and Front and I'm looking at what's going on on SR nine hundred by Talis. And so my thought and question is, is can we take one intersection and make a change to it? So I'm looking at eighteen, which is Sunset and Front, and looking at that as a business district. And if that's a level E failure, is this going to impact potential businesses in downtown Isaquah which affect sales tax, which affects our prosperity? And can you change just that and work on that to improve that to a D or something without working on your entire model?
Yes, you can just do an intersection improvement. We, there is already a TIP project in place at that intersection that we've assumed, which takes away parking. So we'd have to do more than that and that would probably take away sidewalks and/or buildings in order to get that intersection to go to D.
So, difficult.
Difficult, yes.
Okay, so.
But possible?
Impossible.
But possible.
I just want to follow up on that one, Eileen, because I think last time when we were meeting, I had expressed a great concern to improve traffic in Old Town. But then when I went home and thought about it, are you improving traffic for people who drive within the city with Old Town as a destination or would you just be making it easier to get through town?
For the computers, yeah.
And so I think at some level, we're going to have to discuss where it is okay for us to have the slowdowns and why it would be okay to have it in certain areas. So afterwards, I emailed the planning team and said, I actually think that should not be improved.
Well, the improvements on Newport hopefully will be that.
I'm all for that, but then the Old Town one, I was thinking, if you go and improve that, you're going to make pass-through traffic easier and that may not be the best.
Well, but if we make Newport easier by putting it...
That's perfect.
Then they hopefully will be taking that more often and frequently because they'll, they'll literally be able to pass through.
So when you, when you reference Newport, you mean the west bypass?
That was your words.
You used the word bypass.
I'm sorry, before your question, just to address, we did, when we looked at what additional improvements we should assume in that final model run that were realistic but still allowing some E and F, we took into consideration what we heard. One of the things we heard was periphery might be an okay place to look at Es and Fs because that's where we've got probably a lot of regional traffic. So if you look at what's on the map, I think for the most part, four of those six would probably be considered periphery type intersections. The other thing that we did consider is the, down the Sunset and Front, just, we did not want to ruin the character of the Front Street corridor by building some sort of large improvement there. So, sorry.
Oh, that's great. I appreciate this level of discussion and your inspiration of it, Josh, because we can talk about all these numbers, but we're, it's only now that we're talking about objectives and that is to serve economic development or tourism, you know, the weekend travel or whatever it is. And serving individual constituents and how long it takes them to get from one place to another is another thing. But the identifying that number eighteen is in a commercial district and number G two or thirty-five or the ones up in the corner.
Oh.
Our residential transportation issues are so qualitatively different that the PM peak hour, we could say, well, we want more models, but we still only have some kind of metric that requires a lot more evaluation when it comes down to the, what you really do because of an objective oriented plan, which goes to Paul and Stacy's master transportation plan, which is strategic and objective, used to come into my mind while I'm looking at these things.
Yes, Josh.
Have we, I don't know, have we analyzed, but what, what would it take to analyze specific areas that are, you could call them outliers, you could call them non-data point intersections or corridors that don't fit within this Monday through Friday PM peak? I mean, in other words, if we were to take a look at five, six, seven places around the city where your reverse commute direction at certain times of the week is horrible, like the nine hundred northbound on a weekend or, I mean, that's just the one I know the best, but I'm sure there's got to be plenty of others where it's, it is the opposite of what you would normally see in a PM peak. So you've got the going in, you know, on Newport past IVE or something that is going to be, you know, pretty congested in the AM. I mean, do we know what the cost is of just assessing, are there five or six places where these improvements could be made and is it therefore worth including those improvements as well for the sake of those five or six corridors? Because I don't think it's everywhere in the city. I don't think we have an AM peak congestion problem in Isaquah the same way we do in the PM peak. Just driving around, I think any of us could see it's really specific areas at specific times. So is there a way to look at remedying those areas and times, however limited they may be?
So, you know, that's an interesting prospect. By your own experience, northbound nine hundred, what time is that?
Weekend.
What time is that?
Ten to two, somewhere in the AM. It's morning, it's morning, late morning, it's lunchtime. It's basically the opposite of what we're modeling. So I, I'm just pointing that out as one area where there's a specific problem at a specific time that's not PM peak Monday through Friday. And I would bet there's probably four or five other types of situations like that if you were to analyze it throughout the city where improvements could or should be made for the sakes of those particular times and corridors. And so I'm just sort of wondering what it would take to do that analysis to identify what are, and I'm saying four or five. It may be two or three, it may be six or seven. But what would it take to analyze where those problems are that don't fall within this modeling scenario such that we can make those policy decisions about where we want to make improvements and for whose benefit and when?
I have a question. So is it, can you, can you really pick four or five areas? But don't you have to gather data in the entire system during that period of time?
No, I mean, I can collect data at specific locations, existing counts. The challenge is going to be, how do I project growth at those locations? I mean, I could, I could use the PM peak hour model to help me figure out a growth rate. But again, the growth rate that's in our PM peak hour model is for PM peak hour, so.
If it's already a problem and we don't have a growth overlay, then growth won't participate at all in its costs. So it would be a hundred percent city funded. I mean, that may not be a bad thing. It's just an outcome of how we would have to do our work. That's where our dominoes fall, you know. Torsten needs certain data to get to certain piece so that I can get you to another piece. If you're willing to have the city fund those kinds of specific problems without knowing whether there's a growth component, we could do that. But I'm not going to say easily and casually. We haven't, neither one of us have answered, I'm going to make you answer, you know, how long that would take and how much money it would take.
I think Josh is asking for that, right? You're asking, what would it take to do that?
Yeah, because you, you made a comment earlier, I forget which one you made the comment about, well, it would cost X percent above your TIP to account for these other scenarios. But we don't really know that. We don't really know what the true cost of improving other intersections at non-Mondays through Fridays PM peak times would be because we don't, A, know exactly what those corridors and intersections are currently, other than anecdotal evidence. And we don't know what the cost would be of gathering that information to assess that. But, you know, it seems like we've identified certain aspects, whether it's the schoolchildren, whether it's, you know, just weekend commuters or tourism or whatever that, what's causing the problem. But there are places that are clearly congested at non-weekday, you know, non-weekday PM peak times. And so how do we, how do we look at fixing those? Is there a way to gather that info?
And I'm not trying to be argumentative, Josh, but being devil's advocate, if SR nine hundred is a corridor that you're, you're using as an example, I mean, the only thing that could be done there is to widen it. It's already three, four lanes, even five lanes in some sections by direction. So is that, I mean, I know that was clearly not a vision of the CIP was to widen SR nine hundred any more than it already is. It becomes very pedestrian, non-friendly, uncrossable, you know, at those kind of widths. So I guess the question is ultimately, if what you're asking is, give me an improvement that fixes my weekend traffic on SR nine hundred, I'm going to tell you, you need more lanes. Do you really want that?
I don't think that's true, though. I guess as a counterpoint, because if you add additional network capacity, whether it's near the Mall Street corridor, 12th Avenue overcrossing, other means of getting people away from that corridor, you don't necessarily need widening when you have capacity.
We've done that with this grid network. I mean, we provided like three or four new corridors for people to use outside of SR nine hundred.
So will that solve the weekend? It may. I mean, maybe it solves the weekend problems.
I think that's, what you, what you can't answer definitively is yes or no. But I think if you look at that on an anecdotal and an analytical basis, you would say mating, you know, making that connection between the Pickering Barn, you know, the Pickering area and Sixty Second Street will help.
Crossing over the 12th Avenue.
Will help those areas because you're going to find alternative means. Because right now, you know, on the other side of ninety, you've only got three ways to get over there. Adding those additional areas and enhancing the capacity on the north side will help significantly.
So it seems like there's, there's two questions. There's knowing where there's problems and then there's the public policy of what do you want to do when you know. How is it that Google knows, Google is telling you right now that southbound Newport Way at Sunset is red and northbound Newport Way at Sunset is yellow?
Well, well.
How is it that?
Tola.
It's, it's measuring a movement at that intersection. It's not averaging all the movements at that intersection.
It's not averaging all the...
All the movements.
There's technologies that are available to us by having cameras around the city that would allow us to gather data in a way different than traditional methodologies because of the emergence of these, the ubiquity of webcams over the last five years.
Yeah. I don't think the city's cameras are sophisticated enough to collect counts, but, I mean, they are, they are out there, but.
So you're saying I should take stock in Google's assessment?
What I'm saying is there, there is data that's feeding that, but realize it's not the same as doing an intersection capacity analysis. So it's, it's showing you a corridor that's red, right? That's one movement. It's a through movement on a particular corridor. The left turn, the right turn on that same movement and then the other three legs that hit that intersection are not being considered in that red.
And it also doesn't know where the traffic came from, which we have to know in order to know who to charge.
But your point was about data collection. There may be other means to collect more data.
Well, just, we've been talking about this outside of PMP, right? Understanding, do we have problems in other times? And it just seems to me that if, I'm not saying Google's the authority on any of this, but if they can go take cam data and turn it into predictors of traffic, it seems like we might be able to look at that same data and very inexpensively parse where if we have persistent problems outside PMP,
Yeah, they're probably using their customers on their smartphones, running Google Maps, just tracking how fast they're moving. So, yeah, 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 totally. That's how you know.
We do OD studies based on picking up the cellphone signal.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm kind of struggling with changing, going beyond PM peak. I understand what you're saying, but, I mean, I can't connect... P M peak. Um, I understand what you're saying, but, um, I mean, I, I can't connect that we could, I've seen in your example, Northbound nine hundred, you know, that's, that's got quite a bit of traffic most of the time. So, you know, that, there could be another outcome just because we analyzed another period. I'm having a hard time, um, accepting that. Stacy?
Well, I. It's an interesting question, and I think part of it goes, the, part of the response and my thought process goes back to what Randy said about it's a dis- policy decision that you make with all your services. And so we've made a policy decision that we are gonna a- a- attack traffic, you know, within the P M peak numbers. Um, that so said, I am, you know, somewhat intrigued by, you know, thinking outside the box, not somewhat a lot, intrigued about thinking outside the box and considering ways that we can deal with problems that we know that we have. Um, not sure that, not sure that it's within this process that we're involved in tonight and over the, you know, this year. And the reason I say that is because, um, I, I love those flashing yellow arrows, and that came totally outside of, you know, any transportation planning that we did, and it was something that came part of the, as part of the goal process. And so I don't want the comments and questions and inquiries to get lost. You know, may, they may not fit specifically within the project that we have going on right now, but I think they're very, very important and because there may be some solutions that we can think of to relieve some of those areas, um, traffic in, in non-P M peak times.
I couldn't agree more. I, I wanna remind that at our, end of our last meeting, Paul
was talking about, well, we've got experts here. Let's look to the experts. The experts need to hear from you, not just because you represent the policy, but some of the best ideas we wind up developing come out of casual conversations like this. I've got a lot of things that I offer cities now that I picked up from a city council member or a mayor or a city administrator. Um, I thought Tola's point was exactly the right question, whether or not he had the exact right technology. You know, we need to continue to look at that. Um, part of our seeking from you, this commitment to do this every two or three years is so that we not only have updated data and we do all the technical stuff, but we can buy into the new and better technology or the different hours of the day or whatever it is we need to do. So please don't take our answers today as resistance. It's just our limits today.
Before we go any further, how many more slides do you have, Torsten?
Two.
Okay, you're.
Probably six.
Okay.
Six, seven, somewhere in there.
Okay, all right. Just wanna get a sense of how much more we had to do. That is, yeah, great dialogue. So.
I have one more. Uh, so by the, you know, we're on this dialogue, we're going to come up with a recommendation. So you may go through all this, and the end of the day, you're gonna say, okay, based on all this, it's $20,000 a trip. And, and you're gonna say, there's no way we're gonna do $20,000 a trip. So the question is, does the additional analysis get us to a point that's gonna impact the final objective, which is whatever the cost per trip is on a concurrency rate? So we can, we could spend a lot of time doing over an analysis. At the end of the day, you're gonna end up influencing what the T I P is, which is gonna end up influencing what the final number is, which is still a political and policy decision that the council's gonna have to make anyway in terms of people's ability to pay.
So, so, so what.
Willingness.
Exactly. So what we're asking is, should we build the $20,000 a trip or $50,000 a trip or $2 a trip based on your today's understanding of the general benefits and disadvantages of run one, two, or three? And we're gonna go and work with that. But we won't come back and go, well, you said on the fourteenth of July, it was run number three, you're stuck with it, okay? You're don't, you're not stuck with anything until you see the whole picture. It's just that we can't give you all the possibilities tonight without having a much bigger budget and, you know, a Cray supercomputer, whatever brand names they are now. Probably not Cray anymore. Um, so, yeah, e- e- exactly right. And what we do have with our three different models is three important variations on the T I P project list. If we come back to you and the number is $8,000 and we've got six intersections we didn't fix, we could raise the fee and plug in those projects. And conversely, if it's, oh my goodness, it's $30,000, so you will point to us the projects that we think would be the most beneficial to take off the list or the least effective, and then we'll recalculate.
So I, I think Stacy's analysis of what we were just talking about was spot on because I wasn't suggesting that we change this process or that we go through more model runs to look at outlying, you know, possibilities or anything like that. I'm bringing it up because through this conversation, we're not only talking, in essence, we're talking about concurrency, but we're also focusing on our transportation management. And, you know, they're, they're related, and so my hope was through this conversation that we focus on things that may not fit within this modeling, but that we as policymakers know our problems for our constituents, which in turn may have an impact on our T I P because if we do identify whatever number of problem areas there are that are non-P M peak Monday through Friday corridor problems in the city, there may be T I P projects that come out of that, just as with the bike ped plan. All of a sudden, we identified a whole host of T I P projects that did not exist two or three years ago. So there may be the potential for other T I P projects, which does change that number. I'm not suggesting we need to do that now in this iteration of the process, but I wanna plant that seed so that we can begin thinking about, how do we collect the data as Tola asked? How do we look at non-P M P corridors to help our residents? So that was my purpose, and I agree with what Stacy said about keeping those comments in, in the parking lot, I think, was Friday's, that Friday's retreat we did. The parking, we'll put them in the parking lot.
That northbound S R five hundred on a Saturday, is that the parking lot? Um, I, I would remind all council members that in addition to this conversation, which is greatly valuable to us because you're all talking to each other, each of you will have at least one more chance to talk with us through the various committees that you're on. Some of you will actually have to suffer with us twice because of your committee assignments, but you'll get at least one of us because we're gonna see infrastructure, services, and safety and land and shore.
All right. Okay, la- last time in June, I introduced the idea of averaging the, uh, the intersections in the city together and seeing on a, you know, on a citywide level what, um, what is the level of service A and how much delay on average would we be expected to see at each of the intersections. Um, it's just sort of a, a way of sort of comparing alternatives from one to the next. So, um, so that's what this graph does. I've weight averaged the intersections. So in other words, a level of service A intersection that only has a hundred cars at it is not gonna be treated equally as a level of service E intersection with 3,000 cars at it. Okay? You'd think simply averaging those two together, I should get a level of service C, right? But no. When I, by weight averaging them, it's probably gonna come out to either an E or a very bad D. Um, so that's what this is. Um, run, uh, while the no action, uh, has seventy-three and, uh, seventy-three seconds of delay, basically on average. Um, I've drawn the, the horizontal lines on the graph to show where that falls in terms of level of service. It's about upper mid-range of level of service E. So by doing some improvements, that run one, which represents the T I P alternative is, falls sort of right smack dab in the middle of level of service D. If we did run two and tried to improve everything as best we could, um, we'd be just below level of service D in the level of service C range. And then run three is slightly worse than run two, um, but right above level of service D on average. Okay? So it's just another way of looking at, um, how the system operates as a whole. What does that represent in terms of an improvement for run one? When you compare it to the no action, it's a 35% improvement. Runs two and three are comparable, somewhere between forty-eight, fifty-five percent improvement over the no action. Last time, I also introduced the concept of going from point A to point B. I picked three different corridors that are about fifteen intersections, um, and using that sort of average travel time as an example. So, um, same, same concept, but now including runs two and three in there. Uh, if you recall, last time I told you, and then something new, I think it was Josh that had asked for us to include the existing condition in that as, uh, assessment. So, um, so that's something new in this, in this graph that you did not see before. Run one, which you did see last time, is that six-minute improvement in travel time, okay, over a fifteen intersection corridor. Um, compared to existing condition, that is a five percent worsening. I hate to use that word. It's.
Five minutes?
Five more minutes of travel time than what you would experience today along that same fifteen intersection corridor. Okay?
So it's gonna be five minutes worse, but it's six minutes better than it could be?
Than it could be if we did nothing. Okay?
Okay.
All right. So run two. Again, run two being the one, we tried to fix everything we possibly could. Um, it's about 1.5 minutes longer than existing, um, but a 10%, uh, I'm sorry, a 10-minute improvement in travel time compared to doing nothing. Uh, and then lastly, uh, run three, again, pretty comparable, but at significantly less cost, is a nine-minute improvement over the no action 2030 alternative, uh, and about a two and a half minute increase over what you would experience today, okay, for that stretch.
Torsten, have a question?
Yes.
Is, could you, could you throw two more routes in that, in that kind of analysis again?
Yeah, I mean, again, I, I.
Northbound nine hundred on a Saturday and Walgreens to City Hall.
I can't do it on Saturday.
The Walgreens are on specific.
I can't do A M.
On a Tuesday.
Yeah, during salmon days.
When you're on your motorcycle and it's ninety degrees and you're wearing.
And you're chairing committee.
All right. Three slides left, guys, and then, and then we'll.
Yeah.
No, I, I, I was texting her. I have, I have the evidence.
What? Are there any questions about the results that I presented?
Any other questions?
Any other questions? Sorry, yes, there were, there were plenty along the way.
Go ahead.
Okay, um, I'm going to, um, make our recommendation, um, and then we're gonna open it up for you guys to critique, discuss, whatever you wanna do. So, um, our recommendation and the whole intent of framing run three was to make it the run that we felt would have the strongest possibility of moving forward. So we are recommending run three for the concurrency model, uh, update and then the subsequent impact fee calculations. It is a significantly lower investment than run two. It does not accomplish level of service D everywhere, okay, but it, it took into account sort of a systematic thinking or analysis of where would we allow level of service E and F and where does it make sense to do that? It, yes?
Can you remind me the price, the, the price tags on scenarios one, two, and three?
So scenario one is the existing T I P. It's about $300 million. We have not costed out, again, the projects for runs two and three that are added to that, okay? But in my assessment of what they are, I have estimated that run two would be at least a 50% increase over your existing T I P.
We call it 450 million plus.
Or more.
Or more.
Okay, and run two, I've assessed to be about a 20% or less increase.
Of 360.
So it's still higher than your current T I P, but not.
Wait, run three is 20%?
Run three, yeah. Did I say two? I'm sorry. Run three, yes.
Run one is 300 million, run two is 450 million, and run three is 360 million.
Thanks.
Except none of those numbers are actual, but, you know, for the, for the, for the.
Yeah, it's to help you.
Million here, a million there. Soon, soon enough, you're talking about real money.
Yep, first I can spend a billion here and a billion there.
Yeah.
We're smaller.
Yeah.
All right, run three does maintain 94% of the intersections are at level of service D. We've got those six outliers. Um, I did, in your briefing paper, I, I did point out, and I'll point out now, that it's not, um, it's no stranger to Issaquah to allow failures. Um, the concurrency system, when I first came to Issaquah, allowed, I think it was four failures. Over time, we were up to seventeen failures that were permitted, um, uh, in the concurrency system. So, um, so it's, it's not unheard of. It's not something that you haven't done before. Um, and so think about it in that frame. Um, the, um, there's a minimal increase if you looked at.
Question?
Yes, sorry.
I just wanna make a comment. As I'm looking at this fourth bullet, it says minimal increase in travel time over existing, but significant improvement over no action. So I realize what's taken into account in these is a lot of growth, but I think that also emphasizes, if it looks like, um, some of what we're doing is just kind of keeping up and maybe making things a little better, I think that emphasizes the point that Josh and Tola were trying to make about other ways that we can find to manage traffic that's not the traditional.
Yeah.
Million and twenty million here and there.
And I don't wanna speak for Sheldon, but I know his group is always thinking of innovative new ways to sort of, on the cheap, improve traffic, you know, better than it is today with, you know, small improvements that don't require a huge investment. Um, and those are, again, typically projects that aren't gonna show up on your T I P. They're just everyday sort of maintenance and managing of traffic. Okay. Um, yeah, so the next bullet was the minimal increase. So yes, um, I, I think it was a two and a half minute increase, but, um, but, you know, overall, um, it, it shows a pretty significant improvement if, over doing nothing. Um, and then lastly, run three, um, a- as I pointed out, does have the more aggressive mode, mode share. So wanna make sure that if, if we all agree that run three is the one to move forward with, that you understand that that is part of that component. Um, and part of that component and the reason why we included it in run three is because, um, you know, we went through a five or six-year process on the central Issaquah plan. It was the vision of the central Issaquah plan to create an urban center, to create a mix of land uses, to create a transportation system that would encourage, um, uh, you know, that mode share. Um, and what we felt was realistic at the time was a 10% increase. And I guess what we're proposing tonight is, is there a reason for us to doubt what we adopted a year and a half ago? Um, and so therefore we are recommending to stick with that policy decision that we think we can get and we want to get a 10% shift.
In the C I P and 3% elsewhere.
And 3% elsewhere. Okay, and so that is our recommendation, and now it's open for discussion.
Can I frame your discussion in terms of the policy questions, um, on your last slide? Um, we asked these same two questions at the June meeting, and now we're here at the July meeting, and we're proposing to go off and do a whole bunch more work to get ready for September and October with numbers and costs and impact fees and proposed funding strategies. And in order to do that, we have to use something as a baseline. And you now have our recommendation, which is number, number three. If you think that we're making some sense with number three, given there's a lot of trade-offs, but it seems of the choice is the best of the three, then it takes you in a direction on these two policy questions. It doesn't leave these in an open-ended like, oh, yeah, do number three, but here's what I think about mode split. No, number three has built into it answers to these two. To the first question, the answer is, and it's in the policy memo, no, we're not gonna do D everywhere. We're gonna do D as much as possible, and specifically we've set out a, a program that achieves a 94% D or better, but it would specifically authorize, for example, up to six intersections to be E or F. And the policy briefing paper even talks a little bit about how that could look in wording. Similarly, on the mode split, we would be saying, having had the conversation back and forth, where did we get the data? What does P S R C say? Is it the number? Is it the delta? We'd be saying it's the delta. It's how much it's gonna improve over the baseline. We would not worry about where P S A R C's got itself, its data. But we would say, as Torsten just said very eloquently, as a city, you've made a commitment to the central Issaquah plan, which has inherent in it as a fundamental article of success, a 10% improvement in mode split. Um, and for the rest of the city, we think 3% is reasonable. So if you give us a thumbs up on run number three, as a group, we're not asking for motions and parliamentary procedures and secondes and stuff like this was a formal council meeting, but we're looking for that consensus. And if the general direction is, run three sounds good to us, then you've answered these two questions. If you don't like those answers, then you don't want run three, and you need to tell us what other direction to take.
Great. Naina?
Can I ask a, um, a procedural question? Kind of, um, showing a little naivete here just to make sure I understand correctly. So we, we have this conversation going around about the T I P. So we, we have this conversation going around about the TIP and these models, and if we choose number three, does that automatically go back and change our TIP, or does it just influence the rate of concurrency?
It will, it will, it will change your TIP for future years. So, on your next TIP update, we would likely include the missing projects.
And, and we would likely recommend deleting the ones that we deleted because we don't see the point. At least, we would recommend that from a concurrency and capacity viewpoint. Now, if you had another reason to keep it and you had a way to pay for it, you're welcome to leave it on there, but from our viewpoint, it would go.
So I have a question. What other, what else has to happen that, the mode split? This is, this is addressing those factors that we can control, but what other perhaps regional entities or issues or happenings? Is there anything else that also needs to happen to help us achieve those numbers? So, I saw, you know, metro buses running through town, routes. High-capacity transit, what else is needed, is there-
So there, there are other things that can help you achieve the 10%, and that are not under your purview to, to, to influence or to fund. But, but they're not required to get you to the 10%. So if you look at the 2% and 3% that PSRC was predicting as an increase, those were primarily due to two things. A small increase in transit improvements, so perhaps an HCT-type service, it would be rubber tire, not light rail, over that period of time. The other thing was of charging to use I-90. There's a hot lane improvement proposed on I-90, and that will inherently have an impact on, on mode share. That the city did nothing or invested nothing to get that mode share. But those trips that are traveling through will, you'll get the benefit of that mode share, so.
So mode share is everything other than single occupancy vehicle?
That is correct.
Includes multiple occupancy vehicle?
Yes, HOV, it includes working from home. If traffic is so bad that you decide to work at home two days a week.
Okay. So I have an, I have another question as well. So I'm thinking about, Randy, something you said, is that, well, we're back to that conversation about northbound 900 on Saturdays, is that due to growth? And because part of what we're going to hear more about from you is, you know, as, as Bob put earlier, you know, it's a 20,000 per trip, but that's all growth. That is, those are improvements, there's impacts to the transportation network due to growth, and this is the impact we're gonna charge, you know, for, for that growth. But not all of the less-than-satisfactory transportation experiences, you know, you know, traveling north on 900 on Saturday, that, they're not, is, is that accountable to growth, the way we measure growth now? So in other words, let's say we went off and looked at something like that example. I mean, would that actually, could you, would it play into the fact, your factor of concurrency per, per-trip cost driven by growth?
We have the ability to do the calculation. I can't answer the question about northbound 900 on Saturdays from 10:00 to 2:00 today, because I don't have the data in front of me. But if I know what the current volumes are or the current delay times, and then the model tells me what the future volumes are gonna be and the future delay times, I'm allowed to assume that those differences are attributable to growth, that if we didn't have growth, it would all be due to the existing problem. I have to do an additional calculation, which is if we are gonna make an improvement, what percentage of that improvement solves the level of service problem for the current population, and that has to be paid for by city dollars, and only the increment that's attributable to the growth can be charged to growth, so I've really got multiple calculations going.
So that's, so that's, and you may not have an answer here, maybe I'm way off base, but I'm gonna just theorize that Saturday northbound 900 isn't just due to growth, but it's perhaps an influx of people entering town to get to retail services or other services in the area conflicting with people passing through and residents going out on their Saturday trip. So, the actual experience of a bad trip isn't just because of the growth that we've had.
Right, and you didn't mean bad trip in the sense of they meant it in the 70s or the 80s, bad trips. Bad trip, never mind, we're on television.
I was in, I was in the present, 2014 all the way.
What you've said is, is not only true, but leaves out another important component, and that is after we figure out the growth share, then there's the growth, the portion of that growth that we can capture a mitigation fee from compared to the portion of the growth, real growth on our streets, that we can't charge a mitigation fee because that's the regional traffic. And unless we enter into complex intergovernmental relations with them, and that will be part of our funding strategies conversation with you later, those people we have to pay for.
I, I think we'd also have to make a, a policy change that we are measuring level of service D in other periods besides the PMP hour.
If we were to do the SR900 on Saturdays, 10:00 to 2:00, yeah. Because right now-
Minor change, but still, it'd have to be on the books somewhere.
Absolutely. Okay, thank you. Who else, any questions or comments? Josh?
So on the, on the LOSD on the first question, we've talked about other cities that have different levels or zones of service. And I still maintain that this can be used as a development tool as well as a planning tool for transportation, because if we're trying to incentivize growth in the central area, one of the ways in which we can do that is to change the infrastructure in that area, to make it easier, harder, however we want to structure the infrastructure in the, in the central area to encourage the growth and the density to be there. And so with that increased growth and density that we're targeting, I think the public expects a reduced, worse, whatever term you wanna use, level of service in certain areas. And so, yes, you've got these fringe intersections, as I think you called them, where you've got regional traffic, and so we're okay with leaving them worse because, A, it's regional traffic. But at the same time, then you've also got the nucleus as well, which with a higher density, I think, an LOSD or F, or E, I guess, you know, whatever, shifting towards F, is going to be expected with that density. And then you're sort of targeting where your growth occurs. So I think that's one consideration to look at, is you could take it as a citywide sort of holistic average of everything, or you could actually use this in a way that Bellevue does, where its downtown core has a different LOS than the rest of the city. So that's one thing I'll throw out there, and I may ultimately advocate for that, that position. You know, in terms of mode split, my take on it is there's a lot of external factors that will influence our ability to achieve the mode split that we want to see. I mean, just within the last year with the transit cuts, you know, that's not something that, when the central area plan process started, you know, six years ago, that could have been anticipated at that time. There were certain expectations about how much transit service there would be, you know, what options would be out there, and now we're faced with a new reality. So who knows, in the next 14 to 16 years, what external factors will impede or assist our ability to achieve the mode split we wanna see. So that one to me is, is a little more difficult and squishy to come up with a, a strong policy perspective on, because I don't think that we have complete control over our ability to reach those target numbers. The LOS, on the other hand, I think is something that we control our destiny with. So, it's not an answer, but just maybe some more food for thought.
Uh, may I?
Please, Thorsten.
On, on the ability to influence, let's say, increased transit, what, what you do have the ability to do is look at your land use, which you've done. And, and for an urban center, in order to encourage more transit, you, you've done that with the CIP. So you've created a, a mix of land uses that would encourage the use of transit. A transit agency is going to look at places where there is the ability to get people, and therefore money, over a location where there is not people, and an urban center, and an urban core. So, consider that, A, in your thinking that, that yes, historically, today, Issaquah downtown core is probably not an attractive place for transit. And King County probably isn't really thinking about Issaquah as a place to bore sound transit, as a place to expand their transit service. But with your CIP and with the vision that you had, it is a more attractive place for transit to come. Secondly, transit, if you look over time, the investment in transit is up and down all the time. I mean, I lived here for 18 years, and I remember when, you know, when there was no investment in transit or it looked bleak, and then all of a sudden, we've got a monorail, we've got a, you know, light rail coming, sound transit, all that stuff, you know, and investment, now some of that's gone away. It's, it's up and down, so please don't use the past, I think, you know, Randy has talked about that tonight too with regard to something else, but please don't use what's happened in the last three years to think about the long-term investment.
And I think that was my point, is, is that's why it's, it's too squishy in my mind, for lack of a better term, because there are too many external factors that we can't control or foresee. The last thing I'll say on that is, I'm not sure I could get behind Run Three if it means the three-lane, no-direct-access ramp overcrossing, because my take on looking at the future is, what is the maximum amount of capacity that we can build and that we need to accommodate our future growth? And I don't wanna see ourselves, sell ourselves short and say, let's plan for a three-lane overcrossing or a three-lane Newport between Maple and Sunset, when we should plan for the bigger and the better, you know? That extra capacity is gonna be needed, we don't wanna build a, a three-lane Maple to Sunset, and then 10 years later realize, you know, gee, we should've done a five-lane, because we really needed that five-lane. Once you, like you see on Front Street, once you got it two lanes, there's buildings on either side, there's nowhere else to go. So I'd rather see us go for the, the bigger package.
Thank you, Josh. Lot to think about there, anybody else have final comments or questions?
I, I guess I'm, I'm also, I like generally the methodology that came up with this option three, but like Joshua, I still wanna understand the overcrossing access to I-90, or not access to I-90. There's a whole bunch of high-level reasons to have there be access to I-90, and that revolve around promotion of, of carpooling and, you know, the decision on whether to do that or not seems like, I, I just, I have to guess that it's, it's a larger question than just our chunk of what, what we might project that would cost. There's, there's sort of, our regional partners, I think, would wanna be involved in that, and the state would wanna be involved in that, and it just seems like something that I don't know if we wanna close the door yet on the council's intention on that particular facet. Because I always, to me, there's so much more value if you have an HOV on and off-ramp there than if you don't. And I think about that in terms of, for instance, residents on Squawk Mountain, right? For whom the, the challenges at Highway 900 represent a significant impediment to getting onto westbound, westbound I-90, but if you had a HOV on-ramp, the, the morning prospect looks a lot different, just as to pick one example. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else? Stacy?
So I think generally we're headed in the right direction. I guess I would agree with these comments that Josh and Tola made, except I also heard you say earlier that you may have information about why it might make sense to build the overpass without the connections at first?
Well, I think you can consider any project, I guess, in phases. We're looking at 2030 and a 16-year period, and it was, it was my recommendation to staff that the, this particular project be at least this, for this impact fee calculation, to be the three-lane version. I don't think that you need five lanes, and I don't think you need the direct access ramps. We're not even sure that there would be hot lanes or HOV lanes to connect to in that vicinity by 2030 anyway. So, what my point was, though, is that you could certainly think of the project in two phases, that if ultimately you do wanna plan for a five-lane and a direct access connection, that you do the best you can in building and designing the three-lane version so that it can accommodate the five-lane and, and direct access ramps. If that means building it to five lanes right away, but only striping for three, that's one option. Another option is to have two separate structures that cross, but that allow for the connection, you know, once you build the other two lanes across the, you know, across the facility, so that they can tie together. So there's lots of engineering's answers there. What I was trying to accomplish was reducing your overall investment in the 16-year window, but still accomplishing your level of service D standard.
Thank you. Please.
So, we're going to make some policy decisions now, but we're going to take a look at this again in two to three years. If we were further down the process of planning for the 12th Avenue crossing, we could adjust and change up to a five-lane?
Yeah, and, you know, definitely, we should point out that when you go to look at, you know, one of your projects, your TIP projects, is to rebuild the Front Street interchange. And when you're looking at that, the state will require that you also look at the 12th Street overcrossing. So you're gonna be looking at the whole, sort of from 900 to Sunset as part of the study that's required by the feds and required by the state for doing any change over I-90. So, in that study, there will be lots of alternatives and options that are required to be looked at, and I guarantee you that you'll be looking at the three-lane, you'll be looking at a five-lane with direct access ramps at 12th, you'll be looking at other alternatives to Front Street than what we've priced out for the, for the TIP.
Can I ask, why do you have to, why do you have to have five lanes to do direct access? Because like 142nd and East Gate is just two lanes.
Right. The demand for those HOV direct access ramps exceeds one lane of capacity. So, another reason why I did not recommend it is because by building those direct access ramps, you increase the regional, sort of, through trips through Issaquah, because you've created another way to get in and through Issaquah. So, you've maybe relieved SR900 and created another way to get to I-90, but the gap that you've created will be filled by people that can't get off at the Bellevue interchange or anywhere else. The Front Street interchange, the Sunset interchange, they'll come back to SR900. It's the old adage, you build it, they will come, right? So, so it's another way of thinking about it, you know? You, you create a, a better and another opportunity to get in and out of Issaquah, and someone will fill up the gap that you created somewhere else.
Okay, I'm sorry, I still don't see why you have to go with a lot of lanes, because 142nd, it's not like it's jammed up. It, it tends to get busy at the Bellevue College and at, at class time, but other than that, it's a fine change.
Yeah, there's a demand for the three-lane crossing just to get from one side of Issaquah to the other. That demand does not go away when the access ramps are added. And when the access ramps are added, there are two more lanes of traffic, one that's leaving Issaquah and one that's coming into Issaquah that also have to use that bridge now. So you've created the need for another lane in each direction to serve those folks as well. Does that make sense?
Okay, Naina, go ahead, please. I've already gone once. In this final round. Go ahead.
This, this conversation is especially dear to me when we talk about what you've just so clearly characterized as what is our objective? And especially the central Issaquah plan, I thought our objective was to complete, create a complete-
Plan, I thought our objective was to complete, create a complete city, one where people work here. And, and if we continue to serve a commuting community, we'll certainly need access onto the ramp and all sorts of things that'll send people out of the community. But we wanted economic development here, and we wanted people to work here. So I'm thinking about those kinds of quality objectives in looking at the strategy of what our traffic mitigations serve. And I appreciate what you just said, because that's something that's important to me personally.
Thank you. Two things. First of all, thank you for your recommendation. I don't think that was easy to make, and I think it's bold, and I understand it. And so I, I thank you for that, that, then we're talking about the overcross one, this discussion we just had. So that's exactly what we were asking for, and that's what I was looking for. Secondly, you know, prior to this meeting, you know, we had a joint meeting with Sumamish, and, you know, some of these are regional issues. And we have intersections here that, we have a city to the north of us that might, maybe we should talk with about. Oh, I'm serious.
Yeah, you're right.
We're isolated here, but, but I don't, you know, I'm looking on page 21 of 31, the map, and I'm looking at, you know, intersections 12 and 13. Oh my gosh, those are the Issaquah Falls City Road. And, and, you know, you know, perhaps through a partnership, additional resources could be made, could be made available to improve this for both parties, us and Sumamish, and we can still, who knows what possibilities exist, but I'd be very interested in exploring that type of regional cooperation on those issues. Okay, last call? As soon as-
I'll, I'll, I'll have a-
Okay, this is your last token, you're out, yeah.
It's short. Just in response to, to the question, I, I totally agree. I mean, I, workforce, housing, and living wage jobs have been my biggest priority for five years. I totally agree, we should be our own, we should be a, a complete community as much as possible. Having said that, the CIP, we already bring in, you know, 6,000 employees an hour for two hours in, in the morning on I-90. And if you look at where the CIP goes to, unfortunately, we don't close that gap over the next 20 years. We don't create enough housing to make up for all the jobs that are going to get created, even though we, we really chose a CIP to as much as possible get that balance. So there will be people coming in and leaving on I-90, as much as we want to get that balance. So I, I continue to, to really feel that there's a lot of value to the, to the potential high occupancy access, because we're just never going to, we, this city fortunately is an engine of, of job creation and has been for a long time and will continue to be, and, and housing, we just can't keep up with that. Thanks.
Gentlemen, you're, you're taking all your notes for this evening? It's going to be recorded, and it'll be available online to watch again. I saw in the schedule, so we have it coming up right away. You've already mentioned infrastructure, I think it's this week? It's this Thursday?
Yep.
Could you, and then services and safety in August, and then transportation, excuse me, land and shore?
Also August.
Also in August. Is that meeting still on in August?
Absolutely. Land and Shore does not rest.
Hey, Tola, give yourself an extra hour to get there.
I will not be coming from Walgreens. I'll be coming from Belred. It's much easier to get here from Belred.
I was going to suggest ride a bike, you can go around all that stuff.
He wants a bike.
So, so, real quick, what's going to be different in these committee meetings? We're going to start introducing, you pointed to Randy, so-
Right, because I, I'm not attending any of them.
We are, we are not, we are not intending new materials or new presentations at any committee meetings. We wanted to have, all of you have time to kind of go away from this and then come back, and you may decide at a particular committee meeting, you only need five minutes with us, it's quick, you had one quick question, we're out of there. Another committee, or another individual member of a committee might go, oh, woke up in the middle of the night with this question, am I glad you guys are here? So this is opportunities, but not new material. You've got everything that we have to share, now it's time for you. Basically, Charlie and I are going to sit down and go, where are we, infrastructure? Josh, right, your chair? Okay. Mr. Chairman, you and your members have any questions? We're here at your pleasure.
Okay, great. And I would then ask everybody to think about the two policy questions that are up there, because that's what we were asked to tonight. It's difficult to, I think we need to, you know, our heads are going to need to spend at least one night on a pillow to think most, more clearly about any of these. And, and also, oh-
Can I ask a clarification?
Sure.
There's a lot of talk tonight about not necessarily agreeing with the list of projects that were in the different scenarios. So is that not a policy question, too, about, is the 12th Avenue overpass three lanes or five? I mean, how do they go ahead if we don't provide input on that?
We're trying to cast this as a level-of-service discussion with us as your experts making what we think are the most informed choices about which project. But I would never say to a council, you can't touch our project list. And so we would expect that if enough of you had some really strong concerns or pushback, whether it's the five-lane, three-lane of I-90 overcrossing or something else, we better be listening, or we're going to pay the price when we come to you with the final, and you're going, I'm not going there. So we would like some feedback. What I would really hope that you don't feel the need to do is to go through all the projects one at a time, you know, re-characterize them, figure out the right-of-way costs and the exact alignments, oh, and prioritize them so that we know which ones to do first and which ones to do last. You're welcome to do that, but our ability to deliver on that is really limited. In the end, we're going to have a list. And if you agree with that list, and if the list reflects your strongest concerns, we should be approximately on the same page. Remember, we're back every two to three years, so if we've all been schooled on this, boy, that was a bad choice, you know, we didn't need that project, or somebody mentioned and nobody listened to the person who said, we really need this project, we have a chance to fix that.
Right. So as a reminder, then, all the different project, TIP project lists for runs 1, 2, and 3 are in the handout for today, so you can take a look at those.
That's it.
And, yeah, so that's really another one. You say it's a policy question, too, but I think you said earlier, like, this also assumes the TIP changes as well.
Correct.
So we should be familiar with those. Okay. Josh?
I, I can't remember at the moment if you're coming to see us this Thursday.
Yes.
Yes, we are scheduled.
So I, I think we should be prepared to address these questions in committee, and, you know, for me personally, the, the LOSD question in terms of zones is certainly an issue in my mind, that we should debate the merits or lack of merits of, and, you know, any information that you have from other jurisdictions, the benefit of doing that or not doing that-
Sure.
-you know, would be very helpful to us. And then same thing on the mode split, you know, again, because I, I just can't get my head around understanding how we can really control that destiny, any information you can give us in committee this Thursday, I think will be very helpful on these issues.
That reminded me of a question. So I think, I think that's the way you think about the, our ability to control destiny on mode split, I, I get that. That was kind of the reason for my same, my question earlier, what other factors or forces exist? But I'm, at the same time, I think I view what we're being asked by, based upon their recommendation is, is, but do you support doing what we can to get a 10% growth, the delta?
Remember that the TIP list-
Did I get that?
Yeah, and remember that the TIP list that I've given you is all road capacity projects. There's a whole bunch of other non-motorized projects that will be part of the fee calculation that are required and needed in order to make that 10% mode, mode share. So the, the, the city is making an investment in that. That, that's how the city is making an investment to get to that 10%.
So those proj, the bike-ped TIP projects are not anywhere in any of this?
They're, they're not in any models. I mean, I don't, I can't code that stuff in a mo, in our model.
But, but you would need them, we think, to get to that 10% delta. And so when I gave you last September, the $19,000 per-trip cost estimate, there was nearly, nearly $40 million worth of estimated, guestimated bike-ped projects in there, even before you started on your bike-ped list. So we're, we're, we're listening, we're anticipating. You may decide later, yeah, there are ways to, to improve your performance, but the cost is too much. Or you may say, we've got to have those, so we have to charge for that.
Okay. All right. Thank you, everyone. Good evening.
Thank you.
Okay, so we are adjourned.